Good afternoon. It is four o'clock and I am going to call the meeting to order. I would like to ask everyone to be quiet. We're going to call the meeting to order and I'd like to ask our clerk to do the roll call.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice President. Trustee Calvert. Trustee Caudill. President Simon Holland is absent today. Trustee Kelly. Trustee Minneto. Vice President Raymond.
Here.
Clerk Taylor, I am here. And our student Nathan Noble has not joined us yet. Oh yeah, there he is. I'm looking at this blank seat right here, which is your usual chair.
No worries, trustee. I'm here.
Welcome. Welcome, Nathan Noble. So we are all here. Actually, six of us are here and we have a quorum, Madam President. Madam Vice President, excuse me.
All right. So now it is time for us to do the Pledge of Allegiance and I would like to ask Principal Jay Salter to lead us in the pledge today. All right, I would now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for today's meeting. In a second. Great, we have a first from trustee Dr. Taylor, a second from trustee Caudill. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. So we've adopted the agenda and now we're going to move on to consent agenda items. JJ, do we have any public comment for consent agenda?
We do. John Epalito.
John Epalito, President of Protect Nevada Children. On items 2.08 and 2.09 and possibly 2.11, I just hope that the district isn't going to be doing any, entering any data in these kids' permanent records, psychological profiling or any kind of emotional, social and emotional. The district has a bad habit of doing that without telling parents. And remember, those files are never deleted once it gets into Infinite Campus. I know a lot of kids need this, these three items, but I'm hoping that no data ends up in the kid's file unless the parents know about it. You guys don't have a good record with that so far.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Do the, my fellow trustees have any agenda items from consent that they would like pulled for consideration or additional discussion? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.12.
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion from trustee Calvert, a second from trustee Kelly. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Opposed? All right. So that is the approval of our consent agenda items and we will now move on to our general public comment session, section. I should have mentioned earlier that we do have an interpreter here today. If anyone needs interpretation services, please just head out to the welcome desk and they will accommodate you with interpretation services. All right, JJ, we're ready.
Kalen Evans.
Am I on here? Okay. Hi, my name's Kalen Evans. I'm here today representing Empower Nevada Teachers. Empower Nevada Teachers is a local grassroots education and teacher advocacy group that was started by current Washoe County School District teachers who honestly are just really fed up with the public education system in Nevada and the lack of resources and funding that the state provides. I was just wondering if I could ask those of you here who were able to attend the Red for Ed rally back in Carson City in May.
We're not actually allowed to engage in conversation at this stage. I want to take up your time, but...
Sure. So the reason I ask is because if you did attend, you would see that very few attended, including our district heads, area superintendents and site administrators. That rally was to advocate the state for additional funding for education. So I started thinking, there was one official there, the superintendent for Carson City was there and he spoke on behalf of the Red Fred Alley. And I remember thinking, I was standing next to some teachers from Carson City and I remember thinking how empowered those teachers must feel to have their superintendent there advocating for additional funding. And I thought, you know, why was it that our superintendent at the time wouldn't go to the principals' meeting and say, hey, I would love to see all of you there, please encourage your staff to attend, I will be there, I'd love to see all you there. We need the support of district leadership and that's all of you. For too long, it's been a us versus you mentality. Trust from the community, trust from the business community and teachers with leadership in the district is waning and it's broken and we need to move past this. We need to stop pointing fingers and saying who's to blame for past transgressions and we really need to come together and look at ways that we can advocate for funding at the state level. We are 47th in the nation in per pupil spending and every CFO for all of the school districts will testify that they do not have the funding to adequately serve the various populations of our students. We need to come together and start moving forward and fixing that trust. So with that being said, we are holding, I provided you guys with some literature. We're holding an event October 19th downtown Reno City Plaza. This is to bring awareness to the issues that are facing teachers in our community, but also to discuss stories of empowerment that community members have about ways that teachers have impacted them. I would love for you guys to attend, but also encourage any of you that were interested in speaking at the event. We have some information that we're providing to businesses and community members that detail some of the issues that we're facing and we'd also love to meet with any of you individually to discuss the initiatives that we're working on. Thank you.
John Epalito.
That was quick. My name is John Epalito. I'm the President of Protect Nevada Children and I still have two kids left in the district. There's been a lot of talk about what Google and Facebook learn about us adults who use their free products. The information these companies learn about us adults pales in comparison to what education vendors learn about our children. In fact, experts have said, quote, "Never in human history has so much data been collected about human beings as is now being collected about our children." The way this is done in Nevada schools is through Infinite Campus. Everything children do, starting in kindergarten, is recorded and saved. Assignments, tests, grades, attendance, surveys and much more, including discipline, minor discipline, medical counseling, social and emotional and psychiatric. The most critical data is uploaded nightly to the state via their SANE system. The data in Infinite Campus and SANE is never deleted. Experts on the left and right are very concerned about having all this student data in the hands of third parties like Infinite Campus and the state of Nevada and how it will affect the future of our children. Washoe County School District has taken this one step further by naming over 150 vendors as school officials. Once a vendor is deemed a school official, the district can extract data from Infinite Campus and share it with the vendor without parental consent. The two most recent student data breaches were both the fault of Washoe County School District's school officials. Yet both these vendors are still named as authorized school officials. Question, what would a vendor have to do with our children's data before the district stopped feeding it to them? Some of Washoe County School District's named school officials do this for free. According to Joel Reidenberg, data security expert and law professor at Fordham University, the way free education vendors are paid is with student data. So Washoe County School District is paying school officials with our children's data, usually without parental consent. Class Dojo is a perfect example. According to a recent article in the RGJ, Class Dojo creates long-term psychological profiles on our students. The New York Times has said, "This is done without parental consent or considering the long-term ramifications to our children." You guys all know this. I've given you the information. Class Dojo is still a school official. We at Protect Nevada Children don't think you guys are taking any of this seriously enough. And you can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. Thank you.
James Benton.
My name's James M. Benton. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We are all here because we're concerned about the well-being of students and their personal and private data. Student data is very sensitive, personal and needs to be secured. The distribution of data in any way without parental consent is a violation of FERPA, a violation of federal law. The distribution of student data can occur through hacking, error, third-party contracts, loss of devices and other means. Whenever this happens, parents need to be notified immediately. I wish to cite two articles and I've passed these out to the members here and I wish these articles to be put into the record. The first, Lawsuit Data Breach: A Publishing Giant Compromised Data on a Million Students by Madeline Buckley, Chicago Tribune, September 6, 2019. An Illinois woman and her daughter filed a lawsuit Thursday against education publishing giant Pearson. The suit alleges the company concealed the breach from students and parents for more than four months. This data was hacked, causing the data theft of students' first and last names, dates of birth, email addresses and unique student identification numbers. These students now have to live the rest of their lives knowing that criminals have the ability to compile, build and amass their profiles for decades, exposing them to a never-ending threat of identity theft, extortion, bullying and harassment, the lawsuit states. The other article from This Is Reno, Washoe County School District's Student Data Sharing Violated Federal Law. A message went out to parents. "We are notifying you of this error because the distribution of this information to someone other than the student or parents without written consent constitutes a violation of Family Education Rights and Privacy Act (FERPA)." I hope that these two articles will assist the school district and bring important information to their eyes. Thank you for this time.
Todd Bailey.
The contract with KPS3 is upside down. Usually professional services contracts are signed by the vendor first with a paid deposit before the work begins. The KPS3 contract is unusual and unexpected as it involves campaign contributions and campaign bundling in the election of two trustees on this board. Now, we already heard on September 3rd that, quote, "It was appropriate," unquote. Now, we've already mentioned staff is not involved. In fact, we pulled Mr. Rombardo's campaign contribution, zero. He has no involvement with KPS3. Trustee Calvert is also not involved. Trustee Calvert voted no on day zero on the termination of Tracy Davis and her campaign report is also zero. No involvement with KPS3. What we do not know is did all of the other members of the Washoe County School Board know about the contract with KPS3? And do they believe, quote, "Was it appropriate?" unquote. Now, there are two answers. One is, quote, "I did not know about the contract with KPS3 and I do not know if it was appropriate." The other answer is to remain silent, which means you did know and believe it was appropriate. Look, nobody is more exhausted about hearing about KPS3 than we are. That happened the first time we read about it in the Reno's that journal. We are not the controlling legal authority here. We are not lawyers and we do not know if the KPS contract, KPS3 contract is appropriate. This issue is important. It is not okay for campaign contributors to be involved in the termination of a superintendent. However, it may be appropriate. We do not know yet. We want to find out. Now, we've tried to bring these matters to your attention and how serious they truly are. I have failed to communicate in a meaningful way to change your hearts and minds on this issue and I will accept responsibility for that when I file my report. There are two answers. One is, quote, "I did not know about the contract with KPS3 and I do not know if it was appropriate." Or remain silent, which means you did know. Today is a good opportunity to express yourselves individually on this topic. Thank you.
That's all I have at this time. Donald Gallimore.
I just wanted to stop in and say hi. It's been a busy, busy year, busy few weeks and right now we've got impeachment coming down the pike and I don't know what in the world is going on with Daybreak with our county commission and city council allowing that floodplain to be developed. And we, I just found out that, again, Infinite Campus, campus was hacked. And I'm not sure if you're aware of it. Maybe you are. But the bottom line is that we've got to do something about our children, our data and what we allow to be sent out, especially to be free data entities. So we're here with Protect Nevada Children saying the same old thing and the same old time in a different day. But we've got to protect our children. We've got to stop social emotional learning that is just, it's not what education is really all about. And I mentioned last time I was here, it's about books, books and more books. And I hope that people understand the science from what I'm saying and that is the fact that everybody retains more information when they have it in hard copy and this is scientifically proven the world around, that they are much more well-educated, absorbing and with hard copy and not this fleeting data that's, that comes and goes as it, you know, in a second. There's too much information in the, in the data digital world for the human body to absorb. We can't do it. It's impossible. So what we need to do is scale back and look and see what our best practices may be and take advantage of the best returns that we can get in our school systems with our students and our teachers. Our teachers, they deserve more. I know that I, being a lobbyist last session, the session before last, was a principal in getting the reimbursement for supplies and equipment. And I had originally thought it was $634 and it was scaled back to 200 and something, 89 or something like that. That's a disgrace when our teachers come out of their pocket for student supplies. So we've got PE, we've got to put in PE classes, we've got things to do to go back, back to the future, if you will. Thank you very much.
I brought my cute little person. My name is Nancy Jones and I, I agree with what Protect Nevada Children has been saying about the use of data and as well as using one-to-one devices. I, there's been a lot of talk about what Google and Facebook learn about us as adults and trying to protect that information and it's even more important that we do as, as public educators and as families that we make sure that we know what these vendors are getting about our children and that we protect it very carefully. Without parental consent, ed tech vendors collect, store and share data. They create secret profiles on our kids. We parents will never see the information or profiles that some of these vendors will save forever and potentially sell on our children. Experts on the left and the right have written about how these secret profiles will affect their future for college admissions, military recruiting, job placement and other things. For years, Edmodo has been one of the most widely used free ed tech products in Washoe County schools. About two and a half years ago, Edmodo had a huge data breach where the personal information of students was placed for sale on the dark web. A year and a half ago, the Chinese bought Edmodo, as experts believe it was for the secret profiles of US schoolchildren. Immediately after both of these incidents, Protect Nevada Children begged this board to tell parents what happened and let them decide if they wanted their children logging in and sharing data with these so-called free ed tech vendors or not. We really need that to happen. About 10 months ago, the FBI issued a public service announcement warning parents about the dangers of students who use ed tech products. This board has jeopardized the future of all students in the state of Nevada by not protecting that information. During the legislative session, we had a bill that was SB 403. This bill would have required Nevada school districts to educate parents on the dangers of children sharing personal data and schoolwork with these free vendors. This would have allowed parents to opt their children out. Almost everyone in the state supported the bill, including Clark County and the State Teachers Union. The only opposition came from the Washoe County School District and that's really disappointing. This board was able to get the bill so that the district, not the parents, would be deciding what profiles would start being created on their children. You can protect Nevada schoolchildren through monitoring this carefully. And I'd also like to make a note and echo what the previous commenter said about the value of a book. There's so many studies about the way our brains change when we're looking at a screen compared with looking at a hard copy. Screens are damaging our children's eyesight. They're damaging their ability to focus. They're damaging their ability to navigate those, you know, restraint mechanisms. So they're very addictive. I don't think they should be in schools and we certainly shouldn't be spending our money on it. We can raise salaries for teachers. We can do a lot of wonderful things with hands-on valuable learning projects and activities that have nothing to do with these one-to-one screens that are a risk for data as well as for the minds and brains and attention of our children. Thank you so much.
That's all I have.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a general public comment at this time? Last call. All right. Oops. Move on to agenda item number 4.01, Presentation and Discussion Related to Newly Passed Legislation From the 2019 Nevada Legislative Session Including Implementation Efforts and Policy Work. And presenting for us today is our Director of Government Affairs, Lindsay Anderson.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having me, Lindsay Anderson, Government Affairs. Nice to see you all. I'm here today to just give a really quick kind of overview on the implementation of legislation that passed this past session. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of these quickly. You know, when we're putting these together, we don't necessarily know what else is going to be on the agenda. So conveniently, you have, I think, many of the policies that we're going to talk about today on the agenda later today. So I'm not going to double up on your time for those particular issues. But basically, I wanted to draw your attention to all the work that the team has been doing to implement all of the legislation that was passed impacting the school district. I don't have the exact number, but it's in the neighborhood of 300 bills that have some small change or policy work required of the school board that impact the way we provide educational services to our students. So it's no small task to come back and ask our team to make a lot of these changes. I also wanted to just reinforce that while a lot of the work is done here at the school board, the State Board of Education also has jurisdiction on a lot of the legislation that happened. So they're running their policy work basically at the same time as we are. Sometimes that's a little confusing because we don't want to get ahead of them and have to redo what we're doing. But for example, the State Board of Education is hosting a regulatory workshop next week where they're going to be proposing around 10 pieces of new regulations or the Nevada Administrative Code as a result of legislation that was passed this session. So a lot of regulatory work happening both at the district and at the state level. And then I know it's too soon to talk about even for me, but already developing that feedback loop of things that change and what's working and what's not working and already making a list of things we need to go back in the 2021, I can't even say that number yet, legislative session and adjust to make sure that it's working in the best interest of our students. So as I mentioned, the, some of the key board policy efforts that you all saw at the Board Policy Committing a couple of weeks ago and many of these are on the agenda today. So I'm not going to go through them in detail. I know you're also going to get a presentation from Dr. Lamarcas about the behavior matrix and some of the changes required in Assembly Bill 168, which was Assemblyman Thompson's bill, a partnership from the Clark County School District and my brother's keeper in Las Vegas that brought forward this piece of legislation around restorative practices. We've already heard about the teacher reimbursement supply and how this was an effort to make it a lot easier for teachers to get access to those reimbursement funds so it wasn't a bureaucratic process. We've, we've had many discussions about school volunteer background checks, safe exposure to the sun. Again, I'm not going to go through all these because you're talking about them later today, but all really important efforts that required you to adopt or change board policies that you currently have. But there's plenty of other pieces of legislation that don't necessarily require a board policy but that also require changes for our districts. So for example, I was at the Washoe County Commission today where they had a first reading of an ordinance that will ultimately include us into the E911 oversight, which will ultimately fund the body worn cameras for our school police officers, which was a new part of the legislation in SB 89 where our school police officers will also be subject to the same state mandate as other law enforcement agencies as it relates to body worn cameras. So lots of work happening across jurisdictional lines. Mr. Wright can tell you more probably about SB 245 and tort cap limits, but that will have an impact on all local governments across the state where the $100,000 maximum settlement is now tiered, basically a stair step up to, I believe, $200,000 over time. We're working on a lot of charter school collaboration work. I think you're going to get a presentation at an upcoming meeting from the State Public Charter School Authority about changes that were made this legislative session and new requirements to communicate more regularly and more formally with the State Public Charter School Authority so this board knows more about what to expect in terms of new and expanding charter schools in Washoe County. Some efforts around corrective action plans for our high schools where we have, we're not seeing the growth that we want for our high school students that are English language learners. And then some additional requirements around class size reporting, not just at our K through three levels, which is historically where we focus around class size reduction, but in a K through 12 format. Chief Trevino and my favorite sergeant over here, Mr. Price, have been working. There was a meeting this week about a statewide process for a youth mental hold. So basically like a legal 2,000 for minors. And that was a state law that Chief Trevino championed this legislative session. I wanted to acknowledge October coming up here in only a few days, a cybersecurity awareness month, not something that the school board has to obviously adopt a policy on, but something that we'll participate with. And then handle with care initiatives that you've heard from our counseling director many times about how we're going to better coordinate with law enforcement agencies when we have students that are impacted by a serious crime that they perhaps witnessed at their home or a domestic incident where school officials will be notified that something happened so that we can handle that child maybe with care instead of in a punitive way because we don't necessarily know what's going on at home. See attached, that's my favorite heading, but basically you had some really well-worked documents that were attached to your staff report today. So one, you guys are members, obviously, of the Nevada Association of School Boards. They have their own government affairs team and they produce a comprehensive post legislative session report and that details bill by bill and highlights what boards have to do, especially bills that require board to make changes. And then also you saw the Washoe County School District's final bill tracker that breaks down bills, sometimes even three or four or five or 10 rows based on how many different things the legislation requires us to do. So that's a joint effort from Ms. Bachelder and Ms. Scurry and so I'm grateful for their efforts and how they put that together. It's over 100 pages. But I did want to reassure you that there's a lot of detail and a lot of background work that's happening as a result of legislation this session. Most of it is in progress and on track and so that's there for your reading pleasure. When you can't sleep at night, you can look through those things and get excited. When you can't sleep at night, you can look through those things and get excited. But that's just my brief report for the 2019 legislative session. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or let you get on with your agenda.
Do trustees have any questions? Trustee Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to thank you for what you included for us in the packet. I was going through the first very, very, very detailed, and I'm taking some notes. And then I get to the attached, the summaries I have more, okay, well, that answers that question, that answers that question. So I just really appreciate your, I haven't had a chance to work through all of it, because it is quite extensive, as you said, but I just appreciate having the additional information for me to reference for those items that kind of got my attention and I wanted to just know more about, frankly. So I appreciate all the work from all the staff that made it easy for us to kind of follow along and pay attention to what happens now.
Yeah, if I could just say, Vice President Raymond, that, you know, your membership in the Nevada Association of School Boards adds value to our legislative efforts. And so I don't ever want to duplicate what they're doing. We have our own perspective, but I certainly want you to know that there's value you get out of paying for their advocacy team, too. And so I included that because sometimes their notes maybe have a more statewide angle than what's happening in Washoe County School District. So it's really well done.
Dr. McNeil?
I just want to thank Lindsay and the entire team. You know, Lindsay attends the Nevada superintendent meetings with me, and she's always a great ear to pass things through and working very closely with the leadership team. So thank you so much for all of the work and the efforts. And I know Dr. Lamarcas and Debbie Byersdorf, and we've got some great presentations, a lot of, a lot of people doing, you know, good things for children every single day. So thank you.
Any other questions? Well, yes, I'd like to thank you, Lindsay. I do have one question. But I also want to just mention that, you know, I, I think it probably doesn't get noticed by everyone in the district, our teachers, you know, on the front line and, and everybody working busy in schools, maybe aren't aware how hard you're working every day of the legislative session to fight for them and for all of our staff and all of our students for funding for everything possible. And, and we just appreciate you so much. And I know that is a team effort. Often you are joined by staff and superintendents, past and present, and in between, and board sometimes to try to rally around whatever the cause might be, but just greatly appreciate all that you do down there. I did have a question, and I, I just thought of it now. I should have asked it before, but for the school funding and the Commission on Education, I know we have a representative as Washoe County School District, and that is our CFO, correct, Mark Mathers? Is there any other representative from the Washoe County area that's serving on that commission?
There's not. So it's the Commission on School Finance, Commission on School Funding. Their first meeting is Friday where they're going to get together, the whole group together. Technically speaking, no, there's no one else specifically representing the Washoe County School District. They were, four CFOs were allowed a slot, and our CFO was selected of one of those four. I think that's exciting. I think it's a reflection of the state that we live in. The legislative leadership appointed the members of the commission, and none of the legislative leaders currently represent Washoe County. So I think we were in a little bit of a, an uphill battle there. I, I continue to believe that they'll do what's in the best interest of all kids, but it's something that we'll be watching very closely, particularly because the original legislation had some things in it that could negatively impact Washoe County School District in particular, different than every other school district. But I'm confident that all the members know what that is, probably because they've heard from me already. But I think we'll have a keen eye on that, and we'll certainly be engaged, you know, giving public comment and testifying at that commission just like we would in a regular legislative hearing. So they're not going to get away without addressing our issues.
And was that, there was early talk about whether they would appoint a school board trustee to that commission? Do you know if that came about?
There is not a school board trustee representative. I'm just going through the list in my mind. There, there was not a specific slot for that person. There in fact wasn't one for superintendents either or any other district staff except for CFOs. So there's not a specific school board representative.
Great. Well, thank you. I do believe we have some public comment on this agenda item.
Todd Bailey?
Madam Vice President, I would just like to say Lindsay's great. I work opposite of her on a number of issues, starting all the way back to AB 46, and the fact that she's still in the building says a lot. But she's always a pleasure and comes prepared with her facts and is always very cordial, and, and so that's, that's really great. I won't take up too much more time than that, but I think she's going to represent you well in 2021, and we're all going to be very busy that year.
John Epelito, Protect Nevada Children, former teacher, I taught for six years. On the legislative update, what the lady up here with the baby said, by the way, I've never met her or seen her before, but she had some good things to say. I like what she had to say. On SB 403, when that bill was presented, every senator was on board, 10 or 11 people spoke in support of that bill, the, including the State Teachers Union, the Washo, Clark County School District supported the bill. The only entity, and this is huge, and that's why I, I want to mention this, Lindsay didn't mention it publicly, it might be in the summary, you guys were the only ones who spoke against that bill. What that bill said was, parents would be educated on the dangers of their children sharing data with education vendors, and parents would decide. What's happening now is parents are pulling their kids out of school. I just got an email this morning of a Nick Polakita's parent. She's probably going to have to pull her kid out of school because she has to have the one-to-one device, and that's a fifth grader. You guys are putting these devices in the hands of kindergarteners. Most of the research shows it's going to be detrimental to them, but forget about that. It's the data. And it's, it's just incredible to me that you guys sit there and you nod your heads once in a while, and you put all these kids in danger. And the thing is, many school board members around the country can say they don't really know what's going on, because they don't. You guys have been educated, and I give you the information every, many times, and you sit there and you do nothing, and it's very frustrating. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, well, then we will move on. Thank you, Lindsay. Is Mike Boster here? Oh, so we are going to move on to agenda item 5.01, Opening of Proposals to Purchase and Possible Action to Sell 29.446 Acres of District-Owned Property Located on Vista Boulevard for a Minimum of $6 Million Pursuant to Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-007 as amended on August 13, 2019. And I believe we have a bit of an update from Mr. Boster and Mr. Etchert.
We do. Thank you. For the record, my name is Mike Boster with Capital Projects. As I mentioned in an email earlier today, this item and 5.02 following this were originally scheduled for September 10, just two weeks ago. The notices and the resolutions that are associated with both of these items reference September 10, and this time on September 10. However...
Excuse me, sorry, one moment. I'm going to ask...
The Vice President can, part of the agenda, combine items. If you're going to be talking about both 5.1 and 5.02, I recommend that we combine those items. That way you can discuss them and, and at the same time.
Great. Then I will officially open up agenda item 5.02, Opening of Proposals and Possible Action to Award Bid to Lease a Cellular Communication Site at Robert McQueen High School at a Minimum Rate of $2,000 per Month with a 2% Annual Escalation Rate and Other Matters Properly Related thereto pursuant to Washoe County School District Board Resolution 19-010 as adopted on August 13, 2019. Also for discussion and presentation by Mr. Boster and Mr. Etchert. And I apologize for interrupting you. I should have done that at the beginning.
No worries. Thank you. I'll, I'll just kind of recap that. The resolutions that are mentioned on both of those items, 19-010 and then 007, both of those resolutions mention September 10 as the date that this item will be heard. And that was published in the newspaper. It was posted in three public locations. So because that, it says two weeks ago, we'll need to ask the board to do a new resolution for each of these items that will name a fixed date, more than likely November 12, for the adoption of a, of a resolution, and then a date not less than three weeks later to open the bids for both of these items. So what we'll be bringing back to you are two resolutions of intent to sell and one to lease that will have the proper dates on them.
Thank you. So I think based on that update, then we will be pulling these two items from today's agenda. We don't need a motion or anything, and we'll just wait to hear back from you in October.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving along here, then, we are on agenda item 5.03, Presentation on the Accomplishments of the High School Equitable Access Task Force Charged with Examining Washoe County School District Practices That Could Result in Barriers to Student Access to Programming and Academic Success. And we have a big group joining us here. See if I can get everybody's name. I see our chief academic officer, Deborah Byersdorf. I see Amy Maribel, our principal from Robert McQueen High School, Jay Salter, principal from Galena High School, Gina Curtis, area superintendent. And then I'm guessing we have in front of us Erin Danielson, a counselor from Worcester High School, and Paola Vasquez Garcia, a teacher from Galena High School.
I got everybody.
Yay! Absolutely. Thank you, Vice President Raymond, interim superintendent, Dr. McNeil, and members of the board. Thank you for having us today. We, this is a good news presentation of some amazing work that has started last school year and continues this school year. And I also want to give a shout out because in the audience, we have four other members of the Equitable Access Task Force. So lots of folks on standby to answer questions as you have them. So I am not going to reintroduce the group to you, but other to, I think to say my thank yous to each of them for being willing to come in front of you today and explain what the Equitable Access Task Force, EATF as we call it, is all about, our past work, and I kind of think our, our plans a bit for the future. So I am turning this over to Amy Maribel, principal of McQueen High School.
This committee, or task force, as we're calling ourselves, was created in the summer of 2018. And I was first approached by my area superintendent, Lauren Ford, who said that Debbie had asked area superintendents to speak to their schools, our high schools, about finding one or two people that would be interested in serving on this task force, and explained a little bit about that, you know, we, we wanted to start looking at and examining the barriers that exist in our high schools and as a district. And so many of the schools selected an administrator, some selected a counselor or a teacher to represent their school, and lots of different perspectives and insights with having a mixed group like we do, because we also have, obviously, as it was stated, many district personnel as well. So we got together and we used the Equity and Diversity Handbook, Guidebook, to guide our conversations. And, you know, really looking at it, there were many things when I came to McQueen that we started talking about as far as our course guidebook and how kids were selected for AP and honors classes, how are our fees determined? And we started having those conversations, but really feeling supported as this committee, this task force was created because many of our schools have those same questions. And so at McQueen, there were a lot of things that I felt I was being completely supported with through the district as we started to look at equity for our kids and making sure that all kids had access to the classes and extracurriculars and all of those things about high school that, that you want kids to be a part of. With that, I can say that this has been a huge benefit for me, this experience, and working with this group of people that you, you never feel like you're on an island, as you do sometimes when you're a principal of a school, and knowing that everyone is sharing these same concerns and has the same questions and issues. So this is a really ambitious group, but a very thoughtful group in the, all of the tasks that we've been tackled with throughout the first year.
It's dangerous when you give me a microphone, but I have a very, a very, this is a solid script right here. So I'm Jay Salter. I'm the principal at Galena High School right now. Originally Debbie had brought me in. I was the principal of Washoe Inspire Academy, and we were working with all students from all walks of life, all neighborhoods, everywhere in Washoe County. And so I was really excited. Thank you, Debbie, for having me on there because representing that student group to me was super important. I get to, and I get the distinction of being able to read off some of the names of our colleagues, that I feel extremely happy that we're, and that was a great characterization, that it is a, it is a vibrant group, for sure. If you came in during the trainings, there were papers all along these walls, and there were conversations going on that we were getting a lot of things solved. So I'm just going to read through really quickly in my graduation name-reading voice, and we'll go from there. So Sandy Ayer, the assessment director for Washoe County, Natha Anderson, who is in the audience back there, I went to high school with Natha. This is Paola Vasquez Garcia, she's one of my teachers at, yep. Darvel Bell, principal at Damone Ranch High School, Debbie Byersdorf, chief academic officer, Gina Curtis, area superintendent, Erin Danielson, counselor at Worcester. I'm waiting for the woo, every time Worcester, right? Okay. Leah's, okay. I just want to note that I, I shouted that out for Leah. Kathleen, yeah. Kathleen DiStefano is a teacher at Reed High School. Crystal Edwards is an assistant principal now at Galena High School. She originally started serving as a Reno High School representative. Joe Ernst, area superintendent, Lauren Ford, area superintendent, Kendra Fox, curriculum and instruction director. Joe Garten is a teacher at Sparks High. Tammy Golden Bosco is a counselor and 504 program coordinator. Wendy Hawkins is an assistant principal at Spanish Springs High School. Ben Hayes, chief accountability officer. Jasper Eisenberg, teacher at AACT. Janine Kelly is the English Language Development Director. Krista Kruger is the dean at Reno High School. Dr. Paul Lamarcas, chief strategies and Oms Budsmann officer. Danielle Landis, teacher at North Valleys High School. Desiree Mandeville, principal of North Valleys High School. Amy Maribel, who's the principal at McQueen. Tristan McElhaney is the new principal at Washoe Inspire. Dr. Krista McNeil, interim superintendent. Melissa Olson is principal at TMCC High School. Christina Oronos is the principal at HUG High School. Troy Parks, area superintendent, myself. Victor Shabondi, executive director, Jen Van Tress, who's in the audience, too, area superintendent. Tiffany Young, equity and diversity director, and Andrew Yoximer, who's the principal at Ian Klein High School. So thank you so much for allowing us to have that committee. It was very much worthwhile. Mike?
Got it. Press the head, got it. I get to talk to you about the decisions that, some of the decisions that we made last year and brought to the board, I guess to be voted on, and some of our recommendations. The first one, our first decision point was to recommend that all high schools take a look at the course catalogs and only use the approved descriptions, including prerequisites for courses offered at their schools and that were approved by the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. We recommended that all prerequisites, including course grades, be, well, that included prerequisites with course grades, be removed from course catalogs. It was a resounding, this needs to happen. It was a huge barrier for a lot of our kids at several schools, prerequisites being placed like a B. You had to have a B in your previous class to move on. Things like that that didn't make a whole lot of sense. If the kid was willing to try and really wanted to be in that class, then they should be allowed to try that class. So that was one of the decision points that we made. It's also important that our students have access to those classes and that we can tear down any barriers that, that are there in front of them, and that every student at every high school, regardless of the high school, have access to any honors, AP or IB classes that they choose to take. As a counselor, we sought through the perspective of student movement, CIT, fostered kids. So at our school, maybe they were allowed to take an AP or an IB class. They transitioned to another high school, and that school has barriers put in place that say, no, you can't take that class, or we're too far in, so we're just going to put you in a regular class. So it was... So it was important to us that students who transitioned from one high school to the next be allowed to continue their education in whatever rigorous course they selected. Decision point number two. This was a big one. We took a look at all of our special programs applications and we saw some disparities in those applications. And we tried to look at it from the point of view of a parent having to fill out one of those applications and we realized, oh, my gosh, if I was a parent, I wouldn't want to fill out one. Some of them were really long, some of them were really short, some of them didn't even ask the questions that should have been asked to get into those programs. So we suggested, the committee suggested that we standardize the application so that the parent only has to fill out one, kind of like the Common App for college or Coalition, just to make it easier and tear down some of those barriers for parents so that it's not so intimidating and it doesn't seem so overwhelming. And if they want to fill out an application and suggest, you know, maybe their kid wants to go to multiple places, they don't have to fill out a 12-page application here and a one-pager here. It's a standardized application. And then we had legal counsel or the legal office from the district take a look at those applications to make sure that we were including the right questions and we were taking away the wrong questions, things that we shouldn't be asking, things that didn't make sense or shouldn't be in those applications. And then legal got back to us and helped us, you know, work with all of the applications. Part of where I work at Worcester, we have the IB program and so we were part of this application process. So through that entire process, it was, I was looking at it through the lens of Worcester. I was looking at it through the lens of a parent, seventh and eighth grader, getting ready to go to high school, and looking at it through the eyes of, you know, we tried to look at it through all different lenses using our course book and making sure that it was equitable for all kids. So that was our decision point one and two.
Okay. Decision point number three, I was looking at course fees. And so this is a big topic right now, students having to pay to take specific courses. So the first thing we looked at is that schools need to really review those fees annually to see if they need to change it at all. Do they really need to charge for that course every year? Then we looked at the syllabus for each class, making sure that whatever is listed on the syllabus matches whatever the bookkeeper has. So when parents go in to pay some fees, they don't get a surprise like, oh, it's actually $30, not $20. Then we, I actually had to go back to teachers and ask, why are you charging $100 for this course? And it was really empowering for me to be able to have those conversations with teachers at my school, understanding, you know, they really do this many, these many labs. And it was, it was interesting to see how they are spending their money. And then we got a chance to look at various courses through different schools. So if Galena and Damone are both offering a foods one class, but one school is charging $20, the other one's charging $50, does that mean that the student who's paying $50 gets $30 more worth of education or materials? So that was a really neat conversation to have with everyone on the task force. And then we had the conversations, what do you do with the money if you end up not spending it? Does that mean you need to adjust the fees that you're charging for that course? So that was a conversation that we had at our sites. What wasn't decided, though, was that every foods class, for example, has to be the same throughout the district. We're still leaving that decision to each site, but it was important for us to have those conversations on the meaning of those fees. Mainly, we don't want to discourage students from taking a course because of the cost. So I think it's our job for each specific site to be able to relay that message to students, like, don't let the amount discourage you from taking foods because your family can't afford $20. Being able to communicate that to a student from the teacher perspective, I think it was the main goal and just being transparent, where is the money going?
Okay. No, you did great. So.
Sorry, one second. I have, yes, ma'am. I think we have some questions. If you don't mind taking them as we go along, then we'll let people go. Dr. Taylor.
Yeah, I'm old, I might forget, so I need to, I need to get it while I can. Thank you. This is very exciting work. I want to go back to decision point number three. So how do schools manage it if there is a child that, you know, they can't afford the $20 fee for foods or whatever the case may be at maybe any of the principals or whatever, just how? So what happens?
That's usually in the counselor's office. So if a student can't afford a fee, usually at most schools, the teachers will refer them to the counselor or to a school administrator or the bookkeeper finds out that the student can't pay because the student hasn't paid any of their fees. And then the school counselor meets with the student or contacts the parent, finds out really what's going on, and then works with the side administration on how can we get this student's fees covered? So there's usually a plan at every high school. I know in particular at our school, we just cover the fees if they can't pay for them. But we've gotten rid of most of our fees, as I think most high schools have. Got rid of some of their fees.
Okay.
We also have some people who donate to the school and we have a special account that we deposit that money into and use for kids who can't pay fees or just are struggling. So we'll take care of a majority of their fees with that.
Typically, do this, will the student say, man, I'd love to do this, but I can't afford it? Or is it when they select their classes with the counselor or?
Yeah. Usually when they're selecting their classes with the counselor and a counselor will say, you've got amazing grades, why aren't you trying an AP or an IB class or honors class? And they'll say, I, or there's a test, I'm not taking the test, it's too expensive, I can't do it. And that's where we'll say, money is never an issue. We've, we're just going to jot your name down, we're going to make sure that your test fee is covered. If you qualify for free and reduced lunch, there's ways to help you out there too. So we want to get the message out that money is never an issue.
Awesome.
And I think that you need to be really sensitive about how you approach that situation. So we try to get to it early in the year and use the counselors. We definitely go that way. We're not sending out a fee sheet saying, you all need to pay, you know, that's not how, that's not how we operate. Galena, we reach out actually to our PTO, has been really helpful in that regard, and our partners in ed have been good too. We've approached them at a couple of different schools that I've been at and they've, they've been really good, like, hey, we, you know, we need some support for some students. And so always with the lens that we want them to feel comfortable about being able to come to us and say, hey, I want to do this, but I can't, I can't afford. So nobody ever gets turned away. And we were actually talking just even for athletic events too, not just AP tests. So like band is expensive, cheerleading's expensive and athletics in general. So I can see, yeah. So we're always looking for ways to support the kids and make it, make it good for them so that they don't feel embarrassed to ask for things.
I really appreciate that because they're, you know, they're students that have interests or abilities and they, we never know what they have in them if they don't try it and to make it easy for the child to be able to say, may not like to do this, but it doesn't exclude them. I was one of those kids that was poor and there were a lot of things I'm sure I would have missed if I couldn't get any help.
And just a shout out, it was interesting because we find new resources all the time, but Nevada Urban Indians actually contacted Galena and they have a fund and they took care of a student who went to an Idaho track camp because he qualified for their resources and bought him shoes and got him the transportation. It was great. And so who would have thought, you know, and I work with Nevada Urban Indians, but they were like, hey, we can help this kid. And they've actually expanded some of their resources. It's just, we don't always find out about them, you know, in a timely fashion. So we're always working to try to find resources for families and kids.
Well, I think that's great for all the schools that do that, to open up opportunities for students in all of those areas that might enhance their educational experience. Awesome.
Trustee Manetto.
Going back to point one, I don't know if I'm understanding this right. Excuse me. Are you? The prerequisites, are we saying, you know, we're just going to open everything up to all kids and let them decide what they want to do and with their parents and the counselors? Is that what we're saying?
That's the goal.
Okay.
Open access for all students.
Okay.
Obviously, we like to look at data, we want to look at test scores. We don't want to set a child up for failure either, but there does have to be a lot of thought that goes into placing a student into an honors, AP, or IB class. But if a student says, I really want to try, I want to take this class and I know that I've earned Cs or maybe I even earned an F, but I'm ready to try, we don't ever want to take that opportunity away from a student. And if they get in there and they try and they're struggling, well, then that's another conversation that we have to have. How can we get them to the finish line? How do we get them to a point where they feel more comfortable? Because sometimes they just, they aren't familiar with the skills of how or the pace of one of those classes. So there's just, not that you just put them in there and then sink or swim, it's, we've got to keep supporting them once we put them in.
Okay. When you do, I went to college a long time ago and we had prerequisites that you weren't going in that class. And I'm not, I think this is great, but I'm thinking, but are we telling the kids, now, when you go to col, if you choose to go to college, if this is the route you're going to take, there are going to be times you just have to take that class before you take that one, so that they don't go there and go, wait a minute. Because, you know, like I would do if it was me.
So trustee Manetto, if I could jump in there again, Deborah Byersdorf. So this decision point didn't circumvent like a course sequence, for example, that we would want our ninth graders to take freshman English, our sophomores to take sophomore English, so there's still a course progression to make sure kids are on the path to on-time graduation. But what we found is just kind of naturally, maybe over the course of years, prerequisites were maybe stacked up on classes that were never intended for whatever the reason was. So breaking down the barriers to advanced placement, international baccalaureate, et cetera, but also you can progress and go into other courses without having to have a B, I think was the example Erin used. So we still follow course progression, but just not, I guess, making our students jump through hoops that they, they don't need to jump through to be able to access that next course.
Thank you. I think that's fabulous.
And just real quickly, trustee Manetto, I think one of the most enlightening aspects of this was when our principals and our teachers and our counselors got in the same room together and they all saw the course catalogs and how different they were throughout the district. And we have, you know, high transience within our school district. And so it was a very robust discussion, as many of these discussions were. But it, you know, at the end of the day, it was the right thing to do for our students. All right. Anymore right now? Then we'll let you continue and stop you if we have something.
Thanks, Jay. I know, it's all right. So I'm new to the committee and to the task force. And so the members really do drive the work and I saw that, it was very apparent in the spring of last year and then the beginning of this year. And my role last year, I had, as North Valleys principal, I had the math department leader serve on this task force. And so she would come back to the school and talk about everything that was discussed. We brought it to our department leaders and had discussions. We talked to the bookkeeper, we talked to the pertinent people who were a part of the decision-making. And so just to give you a little taste of how it came about, if you weren't directly on the committee. So their voice was very supported and heard and that equity lens was definitely something that was brought back to all the schools. Moving forward, our focus for next year is our academic equity focus. And so we have a meeting coming up in October and we're going to look at technology, grading policies and procedures and get more information about that, about all of that. And then that'll be our focus for the year. And so I don't think you guys even know that that's the focus, so surprise. Secret. Cat's out of the bag. Okay. And some of the recent work that we did was really exciting. In August, we had Dr. Doug Reeves come out and speak. He came out from the Boston area and spoke to this group as well as some of the leadership team and some principals at the Acceleration Zone. And he talked about how he, the district owns sustainable practices and talked about the work that we're doing and how we're moving from good to great. And it was just really amazing to hear him and hear his support for us, hear his ideas. And he came out for free, just so you know. And so just want to make sure I plug that. So it was a great opportunity and I think that we had looked at his work last year and then for him to come out was a real milestone for our district. And so in September, if you can click, this is an example of our agenda. So this is what we did. It's a three-hour meeting in this room with a lot of ambition, as Amy said. And so Dr. McNeil started our purpose and our why, just to kind of bring us back to why we're here. And we talked about some of our accomplishments for those people who were new to the task force. And then we broke up in groups and talked about what we were doing at our own sites or our own roles in equity and also talked about our takeaways from Dr. Reeves. And for those that didn't get to attend, to kind of share with them some of the work that we heard about. And then we had Tiffany Young do a wonderful presentation about equity and about rigor and relevance and relationships and just bringing us back to the focus of what equity means. And so she does an amazing job with that work. And then, of course, Debbie Byersdorf talked about moving forward and the quote, academic equity and what that's going to look like. So that was just an example of some of the work that we do. Questions?
Are there any questions? Trustee Calvert.
Yes. So will your topic change from year to year? Are you going to focus on the same thing or how does that work?
Well, I think this, just this is the progression of what is coming up. And actually, at the end of spring, Debbie had asked the committee to send her some topics that were something that they wanted to share about. And she created a Wordle. I don't know if you're familiar with Wordles. Sorry, Debbie. But it's a great way to, oh, I think I have it. But it's a great way to bring together, especially a large group, and their ideas and their focus in it. It highlights what areas. And so the area that came up that we decided on was academic equity. But it's a progression in what's happening. So for this year, this is, this is, that's the focus that we're working on.
So it will change from time to time?
I think so, yes, with what's upcoming.
And with such a diverse group, with teachers and district-level administrators, we, it was really valuable to the teachers, we're like, we need to focus on this. This is what we're doing in the classroom. And so that was good for all of us to hear too. And so it's nice to have all those people there to offer their opinions.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. I just want to say, this is very exciting work. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk about, and I don't mean talk like it doesn't mean anything, but I know there's a great conversation about equity being really important in our district. And as a trustee, it's really good for me to hear, to hear and learn more about some of the practical ways that it's showing up. You know, it isn't just about, you know, race or gender identities and all those things are important, don't get me wrong, but the hard work and getting into some of the academic pieces of it and the access pieces of it, that's hard work. I mean, it really is. And I can understand why it takes such a massive committee, which I think a task where committee is just such an understatement, you know, for that. But it's just really exciting to see how it's showing up, how, you know, folks and you guys that do the work at all levels in the district are coming together and making great decisions for kids so that everybody has, you know, the opportunity to just be their best and that these unintended barriers are not, are not in the way because none of us want that. But they're unintentionally, institutional things and so on. So it's just really exciting to see how this is really showing up at a deeper level and making a difference for our kids. So thank you all and, you know, 2,000 of you on the committee. We just, we appreciate all that work and it's amazing work. It's got to be hard work, but it's really exciting to hear.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I just have one quick question before I pass it off to Dr. McNeil here, but I know having, I imagine having Victor Shabondi on the committee kind of serves that role of making sure that you are involving parents and family engagement in these conversations. But I wondered, I know probably many of you are family members, but I just am curious how you consider families in these conversations. It's clear you put a lot of focus on all aspects and I know you've even mentioned some of your focus on families, but obviously that's just a whole nother component of this equity work that I'm just curious about.
And we discussed that at our last meeting in the spring is how do we get more student voice involved in the work of the task force and parent and family engagement as well? And we think we talked about it again when we met in September. Paola talked a little bit about when she went back, because our task members do get homework occasionally. And when we were looking at fees, we asked every school representative to go back, talk to their principal, talk to their administrative team, their fellow teachers, their colleagues and that. And students as much as possible as well. Paola, for example, is the leadership teacher and advisor as well as a math teacher up at Galena High School. So we're working harder at getting more, more input from all stakeholders. But I think I would also state too that But I think I would also state too that a lot of our collective experiences as teachers, administrators, district leaders, our WEA president, NATHA, we're trying to bring that voice through our work as well. And the things that we've heard, fees, for example, that's nothing new. It's not a, it's not a, a shock perhaps that one school would charge so much for this class, another school would charge something different. But it's just been a hard one to tackle. So that's where we started. But anyways, I think to, I'm answering your question, I know in a roundabout way, but I think that's definitely a goal of, of the task force as well, moving forward.
Well, thank you. And thank you for also thinking about that. Student voice is important as well. Dr. McNeil?
Well, I just wanna thank the entire team, and it's a large team. And, you know, this is one of those ideas that the deputy superintendent got one night and then brought it to the chief academic officer and said, "So how do we push forward with an equitable access task force?" And lo and behold, a year later. And it's one thing to put the words up on a PowerPoint, but when you all walk in this room and the energy and the passion that is there, it is one of the most electric feelings that you will ever get. I mean, these people are so passionate about what they do for children every single day. And the time, you know, it starts at eight o'clock in the morning and it's 10:30 before you know it. I mean, these guys are clicking, clicking, clicking. And so I just wanna say, now in my role as interim superintendent, thank you first of all, Gina, for stepping in and, and being the co-chair. But really, just for the work that everyone does. And I said, I see Michael and Catherine and Victor back there as well. Thank you all so very, very much for what you do.
All right. Thank you all. That was a great presentation. All right. We will now move on to agenda item 5.04, Discussion of Behavior Management and Student Violence, Including a Review of Behavior Events and School Supports in accordance with Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 392, Pupils, for presentation and discussion only. And I believe this is meeting a request of trustee Minneto that was made a while back. And we're glad to finally be able to have this presentation this evening. And we're joined by Dr. Paul Lamarcas and Jen Van Tress, our new area superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. Interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Paul Lamarcas, Chief Ombudsman Strategies Officer.
My name is Jennifer Van Tress, Area Superintendent for Washoe County School District. Thank you very much.
We are pleased to be here. This is a little bit of a more difficult topic than the one we just had. But we're glad that you invited us to be here and we're happy to share information briefly, but thoroughly. This is just a, a quick overview of our presentation. We're gonna go through a couple of the key tenants that sort of drives the work around behavior management. We're gonna review some of the violence-related behavioral events and just give you some definitions. Those are pieces that come from the Behavior Manual. We'll talk about the Behavior Manual later in the agenda. We're gonna review some data, some trend data. I'll probably try to frame it a little bit with some information we know nationally. We're gonna talk about district supports and sort of what we do after these things occur. And hopefully, before they occur, trying to prevent them. And then, of course, we'll take your questions.
So just to give you an overview of the behavior management and the multi-tiered system of support we have for Washoe County School District, or the MTSS process. So the behavior triangle looks very similar to the academic triangle that you will see, that most students are very successful with tier one. So academically, they work with those tier one academics. If they need additional support, we provide the tier two. And then for students who are struggling, we move on to a tier three. For our behavior system, it follows the same type of format. So students who are receiving a tier one level of support, those are typically students who are doing extremely well with just the classroom management procedures, the classroom guidelines, the school guidelines, the positive behavior support. So you'll have a lot of schools that have reward systems for students who are showing appropriate behaviors in classrooms or consequences if, if they aren't able to follow the, the classroom rules. Those, majority of the students do quite well with that tier one level of support. Tier two level of supports for students for behavior management may be students that are struggling with getting homework turned in or following those simple class rules. A lot of times with a tier two, you might see students who are having some attendance issues. So those students may be put on an attendance plan where if they show up for 20, 20 school days in a row consecutively, they may get a McDonald's for lunch, something to incentivize their participation in school, whatever, whatever the target may be. Those are not necessarily your more intense or more extreme behaviors, but they are something that is causing a disruption either in the classroom or at the school level. That typically, teachers work together to come up with plans with school administration and they move forward from there. Tier three students are typically the ones that are showing some more disruptive behaviors in the classroom. These may, these are students that would have specific behavior plans. Those behavior plans, whether they are special ed or general ed, would be defined out by looking at what the function of those behaviors are. That is a, it's much more robust. It's much more intense. It could be a point system that the child or the student is on, on a daily sys- daily basis, on whatever they are targeting. And then you look at the data and hopefully continue to provide that level of support until the behavior is back to, on a path where the supports are, the supports are in place where we have a successful student in the classroom.
We also, and we've talked about this previously through our behavioral, student behavior policy, we also try to approach all of these issues through an equity lens. The, the equity lens is on the next page. And here are some of the questions that, that we kinda, we ask every time we're considering policy changes, providing guidance, practices, et cetera. What marginalized groups are affected or impacted by our disciplinary policies? So, for example, as we've presented to you in the past, disproportionately, we know that students with disabilities are committing more behaviors and they're also being disciplined more harshly at a disproportionate rate. That's also true with some of our minority groups. The, the, do the practices ignore worsened existing disparities? Well, there's more and more emerging data that's suggesting that suspension or exclusionary practices does not help. And that makes sense, right? We, students need to be exposed to instruction in order to learn. And the longer they're away from instruction, the more frustration they may experience. So a practice such as suspension, when you put it through this filter and you see disproportionality, it's something that you may want to address. Who are the stakeholders and how have they been involved? It's students and it's teachers, it's administrators. And we'll talk more later about who's reviewed some of our, our work. What are the barriers to more equitable outcomes? A lot of times it's resources, but again, sometimes it's tradition. And we need to break away from tradition. And we, and we need to understand what are better ways to sort of reach students? What are stronger tier one, tier two, tier three strategies that will prevent behavior from occurring? What will negative impacts, barriers be? How will we mitigate those? Well, as we'll hear later, and we may talk about now depending on your questions, things like restorative practices might be ways to mitigate some of this. So this next set of slides, we wanted to give you this, these are actually excerpts from the Behavior Manual, and I know we'll talk about that later. We've only included four of them. These are central to student violence, okay? This first one, I'm just gonna kind of go through the makeup of this page and that, you'll see that it's, it's consistent throughout. So we have kind of the definition of the particular, what we call event. The event is what's coded in Infinite Campus. So some behavior is committed at school, it's dealt with by administration. They get to Infinite Campus, they code it, okay? And they code the event, they code the resolution, things such as that. Battery to district employee causing injury. This is a major behavioral issue. It's what we, one of what we refer to as the big three violations. These are, these are batteries, threats harm to a staff member that result in significant physical injury. When we are talking about a special education student, this standard changes. And, and the, the injury has to be substantial, more than just significant. And, and we may get into that briefly. We then provide guidance relative to the incident. So a first incident, this is what we expect you to do. Second incident, this is what we would expect you to do. When I say, "we expect you to do," you being the school. Third, it's the same thing. In this particular case, it's the same thing because this is a big three. This is a battery to a district employee causing injury causes a hearing, okay? We also provide schools with suggestions around tiered strategies to deal with these particular problems. Did you wanna say anything more about?
So when we think about a student who has an IEP and causing battery, or battery to a district employee causing injury, we look at it a little, from a little bit of a different lens in the fact that what prompted the student to act out or, or become aggressive towards the employee? And, and so while we always look, always there are consequences for the behaviors. But it, you also have to look at the eligibility category or the student themselves. So for example, if you have a child with autism who has severe communication disorders or communication delays, they will act out on the way they know how. And sometimes that is physical. And so when they get frustrated and they are upset, they may throw a chair or become aggressive towards whomever's in their environment, which can fall under this. But at the same time, the intent is not to hurt the person. It is to communicate that I am frustrated with whatever's going on in my environment. That is really hard to put that balance together and understand what the expectations are. And so the IEP team has to be able to meet the needs of the student, but then the school itself also has to be able to protect their staff. And those are things that we have to consider when we look at what are the consequences for a child with, with disabilities. Emotional disturbance would be another example. You know, what truly was the intent of the child? And, and that is hard for staff to understand, especially if you, if, you know, someone's been hurt. But we also have to find that balance between the two.
No, that's okay. We also have an event that's called Battery to Student. And by and large, the definition is the same as Battery to Staff. Battery to Student, curiously, is not a big three. There's nothing in NRS statute that says if one child batters another child, they have to be removed. We tend to use the substantial bodily harm standard that's applied for students with special education to all students when it comes to student to student battery. So I, I think it's probably important to give you a sense of that definitional difference. If a student, for example, hit another person and gave them a black eye, that's clearly injury. There's pain involved, but it is not substantial. It's not substantial given the federal definition. Substantial bodily harm, at, at its most extreme definition, is something that really causes like permanent damage. So if a person was struck in the eye and they no longer could see from that eye, that would clearly meet the, the threshold of substantial bodily harm. Dismemberment, impairment, you, loss of limb, these are the things that, based on the federal statute, meet substantial bodily harm. Now, we, we, we err on the side of victims. And so when we know that there's been a substantial harm, perhaps it requires extensive medicalization. Maybe there's unknowns about how it's going to impair someone for the future. There is going to be a requirement for surgery. Those things tend to meet the definition. And so when a student does that to another student, we take that very seriously, okay? But again, same sort of a thing. We have the definition. We provide the incidents, guidelines around what you might do, given if it's a first incident, second incident, third incident. We provide some strategies based on our tiered process.
I have a question on that one. What if it, and I guess it really in both cases, what if there are no witnesses and it's just one person's, you know, voice against the others? How do you, I see that it talks about an investigation here. Is it, is that just the process or does it follow the same guidelines?
I suppose, well, we rely heavily, especially in these sorts of matters, on school police, the investigations that school police might conduct, investigations administrators might conduct. At least in my experience, and I'm, I think I'm glad for that. With these particular types of events, I've never had one where, where there's no corroborating evidence. It's possible that it hasn't come to our level because there's no corroborating evidence. But typically, especially if schools in session, someone is around when this sort of a thing happens. Now, as you know, I believe, when a student's on their way to school, when a student's on their way home from school, we still have some jurisdiction and things can happen and it can be very difficult. There's also things that can happen sort of in the home environment, but if it creates a disruption to instruction in the following days, we consider that as well. So we haven't had a lot of experience with that. But there is a sort of an evidentiary process, especially when it gets to a point of hearing, where we look at the investigation, we hear from administration. We also let the student that's in the process talk about what occurred. We look to see if there are statements. We tend to rely on things like video that's within the building or within the bus. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, you sort of answered my question. I kind of remembered we talked about that during school, on school grounds, on the way to and from school, and also at school-sponsored events, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Noble?
So, Mr. Lamarcas, about the student battery policy, I do have a quick question. So let's say two students get in a fight. One initiates with, say, a blow to the face. What is the policy for self-defense or a counteroffensive? If, say, a student who's attacked launches a counteroffense or tries to defend themselves by attacking their attacker, does that also qualify as battery against a student? What's the distinction and what are the consequences?
It's a very good question. For the second student, the student defending themselves, it would probably be coded as a fight. It would be a mutual fight for that particular student, but they'd also likely be identified as a victim of a battery. We do have strong guidelines around students who get into fights and needing to spend some time out. But schools have to sort of exercise their professional judgment. If it's a clear situation where a kid is defending themselves and does only what they need to defend themselves and then get themselves out of that situation, I, I really don't think our schools would need out any discipline. For the first student, if they sort of attacked and then they got into this more mutual fight, they still might be charged with battery. Okay, violence or harm to staff or students, this is really along the same lines. It's just sort of the next step down. So there's still injury, but it's not, it's, it's, it's of a less severe nature. It's still wrong. It's still bad. We still intervene. This can also include things like verbal assault, okay? And then the last one that we wanted to just touch on, because this one is one that has sort of the attention of the nation and needs to have the attention of the nation, this is threats to staff and students. This is any communication, whether it be verbal or through social media or through, you know, a letter in which a, a student is threatening to harm another student, is threatening to harm a staff member, is perhaps threatening to harm a, a school community in its entirety. Again, we provide some guidelines around how you would handle it in, in different incidents. I will tell you that whenever we receive threats of this nature, we have a process, and that's within the manual. I know you've seen that, a threat assessment process. It's really a process. It's a two-step process. There's an initial threat inquiry where administrator with team looks to see, you know, was this just a quick reaction of a student upset, "I'm gonna hurt you"? Or is there something more to this? there something more to this? If it's of medium or high concern, it launches the second part of that process, which is a comprehensive threat assessment, and we kind of go from there. When things are medium to high risk, we tend to have hearings regarding that activity.
So along these lines, for all of these situations, when we're looking at children with an IEP, we have to remember there's also, the team, IEP team needs to look to see if the behavior is part of the manifestation of their disability. Is it a result of their disability? So let's say that they, they're in their general ed classroom, they are struggling with reading, they are on an IEP for a learning disability, and the teacher says, "I want you to read this paragraph out loud." That might, you know, if the child is already frustrated and there's history, they may say something like, "I just want to hit you," or "I'm gonna hurt you," and they storm out of the classroom. Well, that behavior could be a result of they're struggling with learning and they've been called out into a situation. And the IEP team, before going down the road of following the same disciplinary procedures, will need to look to see whether or not that behavior was a result of their disability. There is a process to look at the manifestation. It involves bringing the IEP team back together, looking at what the behavior was, how it occurred, what the reasons could be, and then moving forward to review the IEP as to whether or not they've provided the appropriate supports in place. What does the behavior plan look like? What does the specially designed instruction look like? What do the goals and objectives? Do we need to work with the team to have a better understanding of what that IEP looks like? And this could be for any of those types of situations. So always looking at whether or not the action that the student did is related to the nature of their disability.
Dr. McNeil, and then Dr. Taylor.
Just really quick, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, so on each one of these slides, you'll notice there's three asterisks there, and then it will talk about the bullying. And once we get into the bullying, there's a whole other set of standards that the district must comply with. And so it's possible, whether it's a police investigation or, you know, a labor relations investigation, there's a whole other set of standards that the district has to follow for a bullying investigation. And then if you don't mind, Dr. Lamarcas, would you mind just very quickly explaining what an IAES placement would be?
Sure. We're gonna get into more detail on that later in the presentation, but an IAES placement is an interim alternative educational setting. And so in brief, and then we'll talk more about this, if a student commits a really difficult behavior, and it's in the best interest of that student and the school, we may place them in a different environment for a temporary period of time.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Okay. Two questions. One, just a reminder, can you talk a little bit more about the big three? You mentioned that a little bit earlier, and those things that qualify and those that don't. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Then I have a follow-up, another one, if I may.
Sure. The big three, there's three of them. Actually, there's one big three. A student who brings a dangerous weapon on school grounds or at a school-sponsored event, that's a big three. When we say big three, what it means is the three types of offenses that likely can lead to an interim alternative educational placement. The second is battery to staff with injury, and as we discussed, we apply that to students as long as the substantial bodily harm standard has been met. The third is distribution of controlled substances, not just possession, and not just handing a marijuana cigarette to another student or passing a drink, but exchanging those for something, probably money. Those are the big threes.
Okay. Thank you for that. And the other question that I would have is, as you talk, and in particular, the work in terms of looking at, you know, the classroom, and if it's caused by perhaps that student's disability and so on, and looking at, you know, are we providing that kind of support and so on? It sounds as though that this is, this is something that is, gets a little bit more detailed, perhaps, than what we ordinarily do. How the school's been responding as these things have been solidified? I know, I know this is not necessarily new, right? But certainly bringing it to the board level and having the conversation about how, what kind of support, or have you, have the schools asked for, and then what kind of responses have you received, and really takes another look and kind of elevates this, if you will.
Thanks. So we do offer, so hopefully, before it gets to the point where it becomes more aggression or more physical towards staff or students, the team has reached out to the special education department through the school district, through our either instructional coordinators or implementation specialists. All of our special education instructional coordinators and implementation specialists are trained on how to support school staff, team members on how to implement behavior plans, look at what the behavior plans are looking at, developing, reviewing that classroom tier-one level of support, seeing how we can make it accommodate it for a child with a disability in that classroom to keep the child from escalating to the point of aggression. If you ask a lot of the classroom teachers, they can say, "Oh yeah, Johnny came in this morning, and we knew it was gonna be a rough day." So if you know that those days are gonna be rough, what can we do ahead of that time before we get to that point of escalation where we can mitigate it? So, you know, maybe they need a timeout, or maybe they need to, you know, they need some other level of support, not necessarily a timeout, just to, you know, like, okay, I'm already overwhelmed, I don't need to start the day and try and do 10 math problems. What can we do to support that? And it's a balance between the IEP and recognizing how the student needs support on a daily basis. We do offer classes, we were gonna talk about that a little bit, but we've got some trainings that are going on for staff to help them understand the function of the behavior, and then how to develop those behavior plans, and then relook at it, look at your data, and then, okay, this behavior plan isn't working, we gotta do some modifications, and understand that flexibility, that that can change based on the, who shows up that day and in that classroom.
Thank you very much. Our teachers are getting the level of support that they need to provide, the appropriate level of support for the students.
Let me add, if I may, just briefly, this isn't new, you're right. We've rolled out multi-tiered systems of support in this district, I think it's 11 or 12 years ago, because I've been here 12 or 13 years. All of our, all of our schools have what are called intervention assistance teams. They have other teams as well, safety teams within their buildings, that are really largely responsible for this work. You've probably heard positive behavioral supports. We have PBIS in all of our schools. Those are sort of foundational to that tier-one support. We provide ongoing training around MTSS, PBIS.
You put in mind those for the public that might be watching.
Yeah. MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, and PBIS, positive behavioral supports. We also have been providing restorative practices training, and that's kind of amping up, as you know, the changes in the law. We provide robust training around social emotional learning, which is critical for school climate and behavior support. Catherine Loudon and the social work team have been providing some trauma-informed practice support. I think we call it PATS, and I'm not gonna know that acronym.
Yes. So we have some small groups that we do, and then we have a lot.
Do you mind coming to the microphone, please?
Yes. Thank you. So, thank you, Dr. Lamarcas. For the record, I'm Catherine Loudon, the coordinator of counseling and school social work. And so, yes, we've been doing some trainings in the schools with staff members, and then also working with principals. And then we have some small groups that we offered that we were able to have training for and put out into schools related to students and learning opportunities to learn new ways to approach conflict and things that may contribute to violence.
And we're gonna return, as Ms. Van Tress said, we're gonna return to the support piece of this after we talk about some of the data trends that we're seeing.
Thank you. I'll save my question for then. Thank you.
Okay. So this is pretty simple data. What I mean is just, we just gave you some raw numbers. I would like you to remember that, so this is, this, some annual trends, but we have approximately 64,000 students in our school district. So we have too much violence occurring, but I do want to contextualize it within a school district of 64,000 students. We've got it split by secondary and elementary. Across the top, you see batteries, and we see that we have more batteries in 2019, significantly more than we had in 2016 and 17. I do want to mention, and we'll see that in a moment, all these batteries do not rise to the level of the big three battery, and we'll get there. Okay? So bear with us on that. They probably more appropriately should be coded as violence or harm to staff, or violence or harm to students. But the schools are inputting this information into Infinite Campus. With respect to violence and harm to staff, we see an increase in violence and harm to staff. We're also seeing a decrease in violence and harm to students. You probably have some questions about national trends. According to reports provided by National Center for Educational Statistics, which they track all data for all states, they have seen similar trends nationwide. Violence and harm to staff has been increasing over time, and at the same time, violence and harm to students has been on the decline. I would also just offer that there are some statewide reports out there. Connecticut comes to mind, they're showing the same kinds of trends. U.S. Ed, National Center for Learning Outcomes, Edutopia, a fair number of groups, National Educational Association, have all come out with some of their own reports around student violence. All point out disproportionality, all point out some of the failures with traditional disciplinary measures, all of those point out the need for restorative practices and some of these other remedies, social emotional learning, et cetera. We also went ahead and included fighting, physical aggression, instigation, promotion of fighting, retaliation. We didn't give you the definitions in this presentation, you have those in the manual. To Mr. Noble's question, fighting physical aggression, that's kind of the example that he brought up. You know, retaliation might be, there's a fight, and then between two kids, and then a kid gets into a fight with one of the two kids because he fought his friend, that sort of a thing. Promoting, so when we have kids that are kind of egging on fights with, like, cameras or smartphones, that sort of a thing, they will likely be called out for instigation or promoting fights, and that we see as well. We have a lot of those sorts of events. Do you want to talk about elementary?
Dr. Taylor.
If I may, why is there a two next to staff?
Oh, that was just coding from, that's, it's a, it has no meaning.
Okay. No reason. Thank you.
So I just wanted to point out the elementary information as well. As you can see, that battery, actually, we did see a decline, but I believe that actually reflects more of how principals, administration are coding those at an elementary level versus a middle school or high school level, because you do see that there is a significant jump in the violence or harm to staff between, you know, actually between 17, 18, and 18, 19. And then violence to students has actually kind of leveled off between those last two years. But again, had a significant jump over the, over, between the first year and second year. So it does seem to, on a smaller scale, follow the same information that Dr. Lamarcas was sharing about the secondary level as well.
Sorry. I'm used to just sitting here and listening.
MTSS and PIS have been around for years now, and is this just unrealistic numbers, that it's really working, or is it not working? I mean, what are our numbers telling us? Do we just need to wait another 20 years and see how many people get hit by people? And, you know, I'm thinking, is it working? Who knows? But...
We absolutely can't wait for 20 years, and we share your concern. I will, I will say that MTSS and PBIS, really as a part of MTSS, is not implemented in every school to the same degree. So I would, I would suggest that some schools have stronger models than other schools. And that's, that's on us, as a district, to better support schools when we do find out that they're struggling. And that does occur. So, for example, Ms. Van Tress talked about, or just very briefly, sort of the behavioral intervention and planning process, the FBA, the functional behavior analysis. When, when a student comes to our attention and a school is reaching out for support, we always do our best to support the school. In doing that, we also often identify some weaknesses at the tier-one, tier-two level, and we try to provide support there. I would suggest that at the same time those things have been implemented, we've also had pretty traditional forms of discipline. We did not have the emphasis around equity, looking at data through a disproportionality lens that we have had more recently. So I, I'm confident, I'm cautiously optimistic, that with more support around those things that you mentioned, social emotional learning, positive behavioral supports, but also the introduction of things like restorative practices, and just stronger support for schools that are struggling with some of these students, that we will see a decline. I do believe, because some of this is national, it's not unique to Washoe County, I'm suspicious about some of the factors that are sort of outside of the school environment that are contributing to some of what we're seeing. Let me skip to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry.
Trustee Cotto.
Yeah, thank you. So for the elementary numbers, is this reflective of where these incidents take place? Because we have some middle schools that have sixth grade, some elementary schools still have their sixth grade. So is it based on grade level, or is it based on the school that it took place at?
That's actually a very good question. It's based on school. So when you're seeing elementary up here, you're seeing fifth grade and below.
So if an elementary school still retains their sixth graders, and it happens, that would be in the elementary numbers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So we wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of our hearing data. And the reason why we think this is important is because we, well, like, for example, we talked a little bit about the big three. So these are the events that led to hearings that potentially led to alternative placements. So these are the very severe cases. This is just battery to staff, threats to students. This doesn't include distribution, doesn't include weapons. So there's, there's other hearings that have occurred as well. But so as you'll see, in terms of battery to staff, 2017, there were only three of these instances, 2018, there were 13, 2019, there were 16. So that's a far different number than what we saw on the previous slide. Still 16 too many of these, okay? But it's not, that's why I was saying on the previous slide that most of those batteries are probably really technically harm to staff. They don't really meet the definition of battery. We also see that, so threats to students, threats to staff, that's remained fairly static. You will see that huge number in 2017, 18, that says 19. And what I can tell you is that I believe 15 of those threats came in the two months following the Parkland incident in Florida. It was a very difficult, scary kind of a time, but that's why we had that huge spike there. And when we say threats to all, the reason why we don't distinguish by staff or student is that's when we have kind of like this threat of a mass violence, and we don't know who the victim would be. All right? When we look at hearing data by level, we just thought that this might be of interest to you. So almost all of this violent, very violent behavior leading to hearings is at the secondary level. We only had one instance in 2019 at the elementary level, and unfortunately, that was a very young student, to be honest with you. Any questions about this particular slide? So...
Doug. So interim alternative educational settings, the IAES. This occurs when a student goes to a behavior hearing for the extreme occurrences that Dr. Lamarcas was talking about. And this is where the district has the opportunity to review where the student is currently This occurs when a student goes to a behavior hearing for the extreme occurrences that Dr. Lamarcus was talking about. And this is where the district has the opportunity to review where the student is currently placed, and determine that right now, we don't know that we can keep either that child safe in that location, or others safe at that location. So we have an opportunity to place a child in the IAES, to give the, the site team members or the other school site team members time to figure out what is in the best interest of that student. There are differences between special education and general education students and how that looks. And I'll let you jump in, and then I'll go more into...
Okay. I think you're doing just fine.
Oh, okay. I'll keep going. No, that's okay. That's fine. I'll keep going. So when we look at the IAES for a student, it could, we have two locations for the secondary level in Washoe County School District. One is Washoe Inspire. The second is Inspire at Turning Point. Turning Point is, they are, obviously, they are both considered separate locations for students. We actually also have Pass at the elementary level, that is actually located at Hunter Lake Elementary. So while we're looking at that placement, that depending on what the, what the action was, whether it was one of the big threes, it can be up to 90 days for a student, a general education student, or 45 school days for a child with an IEP. And so during that time, for example, we may need to do some health assessments, we may need to do some behavior guidance. It might be just that the student needed time to figure things out, and, or the, to determine, you know, what are we going to do? How are we going to address the actions that caused the child to be placed in the IAES? Now you can jump in.
The hearing process is significantly more complicated when we're talking about a student that has an IEP. And part of that is we are not dealing, and I think for the right reasons, we're not dealing just with state law, but we're dealing with federal laws. So the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So that particular act also talks about a big three, and they limit the alternative temporary placement to 45 days, unless, as Ms. Van Truss said, the behavior is clearly not a manifestation of the disability. And in that instance, it can be considered, it doesn't need to be, but can be considered to discipline a student like you would a general education student. So there are some significant restrictions around students with IEPs, and for the right reasons. When, when we receive a referral about one of these things, it's always the first question we ask, does a student have an IEP or not? Because if they have an IEP, other things have to occur that have been mentioned. For example, this manifestation. A manifestation determination is like an IEP meeting in which the team sits down, they should review data, they should review the IEP, they should review the incident, and they should make a collective determination whether or not that act was related to the disability. And that is a hard question to answer. You know, we have kids, for example, and I'm probably saying what you were going to say, we have kids that may have a learning disability in reading, or in mathematics, and then they get into a really bad fight. And so the first gut reaction is, oh, well, there's no link, because this is a math disability, this is a fight, how could they be related? Well, what if the student had been struggling for years in mathematics, maybe being teased about their struggling in mathematics? There can be a link, and that team is the only team that can make that decision. That's really all I would elaborate with respect to that.
Dr., we'll do, Dr. Taylor, and then, nope. Trustee Kelly, and then Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I was just curious, has the staff ever talked about having a, an IAES set aside specifically for students that have caused violence to, or, you know, caused bodily injury to a staff member or to another student? You know, a school that is focused specifically on that, you know, that has a dedicated police officer, I mean, other things that, has ever been discussion about that? Or do you think that Washoe Inspire and Turning Point have everything that they need to handle those kind of students?
Thank you for the question. There were actually a lot of questions there, and Dr. McNeil may not be prepared for my response, so I apologize in advance. No, I need to say upfront, and I actually believe she would agree, we don't have enough options at this point for all the potential issues that may confront students. For example, if we identify that a significant contributing factor is mental health, and yet we, a student doesn't have an IEP, I don't know that a behavior school, which by and large Inspire is, is the best location. Inspire is really good. It's a great little school, and a lot of good things occur there. I will tell you that I, I'm doubtful that if a student has had 10 years of difficulty and does something that requires, say, a 45-day out-of-school placement, that they're going to get fixed in that 45 days, no matter where they go. It's an ongoing effort, in and out, sort of an effort. Two, I, one distinction, I think, and Ms. Van Truss may have said it. So we send all general education students to Washoe Inspire, and we tend to send students that are what we call general resource, or their IEPs are just general resource, they're fully included by and large within the general education setting with just as extra supports. We send those students to Inspire for remediation, so to speak. The students who go to Turning Point are students who are already in programs like a SIP program, or behavioral program, Strategies Program, perhaps a program for autism. So directly to your question, we don't have a separate place specifically for violence. The numbers at Inspire are quite small, so much of what they do focuses around behavior management and self-regulation.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Michael, you mentioned earlier that, first off, when it's when someone comes, school official, and asks for a child to be placed in an IAES situation, your first question is if they're on an IEP? And then you have to go in and see, you know, rightly so, if, if whatever has happened, the behavior is related to their disability? Because that mitigates, if nothing else, it dictates how many days and so on. What if it is not related to their disability? Does that change the parameters?
No, it really doesn't. Well, it, it, it can change the amount of time that they might be out. It doesn't really change the parameters. So, so really, what happens in a school is the schools don't really ask for an IAES placement. A student has done something, and based on that, the student is placed on what we call an emergency suspension. And during the emergency suspension, more investigation occurs. This is where we would explore whether they have an IEP or not. It is the period of time in which we would conduct the, or the school would conduct a manifestation determination. If it's a threat, we would be doing the threat assessment process. But IDEA is very specific. Under these three circumstances, a student with a disability needs to be removed for a period of time. If, if the behavior was not a manifestation, then we do have latitude to discipline them like we would a general education student. So for example, if a student brought a loaded firearm to a school, a general education student, they are to be placed out for 180 school days. IDEA says for a student with a disability, that's 45 days. But if we found that the possession of that weapon was not related to their disability, we may place them out for 180 days. It's complicated with special education, because you have to be able to provide specially-designed instruction throughout that period of time, which can be very challenging. You're welcome.
Trustee Cotto?
Thank you. So, in the event of battery to district employee causing injury, so the resolutions are the same each time, at what point does the student just have to be expelled, I guess? If the student continues to commit this act by causing injury to employ, to a staff member, at what point does the, at what point does the district, can the district decide that the student is just a danger to, to everyone around him or her?
Per Nevada revised statute, if a general education student were to commit a big three on two separate occasions where they were placed out, the school district would have the latitude to expel them. You really never have the latitude to expel a student with disabilities. You can, you could require that they not be at any of your physical locations, but you would have to be able to provide the specially-designed instruction, which would be near to impossible, for example, in a home environment.
Quick follow-up. So if this, if this student was a high school student, for example, and they were committing, let's say, battery to an employee a couple times, and the student wanted to go to North Star, would the district even entertain that? Or would the district still say, we have to consider maybe expulsion, because there are still staff at North Star that could potentially be harmed? Was that, is that an option, or not?
Yes. I mean, we look for an alternative environment that will meet the needs of a student, and so, and North Star may not be the best example, but we have had students who we place on distance education because of safety sorts of issues. We've even had students who have gone to Inspire and have done very poorly at Inspire, who will be placed on distance as a result. I hope that answers your question. We don't, we wouldn't allow, if we felt like a student needed to be placed at Inspire because of the severity of behavior, and, and the family or the student said, hey, could I just go to North Star instead? We would not allow for that. We would need a timeout. There are times, though, especially with younger children, and we'll talk about that a little bit in the next presentation, where Inspire is probably not an appropriate location, and so we will find a different comprehensive school that can meet the child's needs.
Thank you. I guess I'm trying to connect the dots, because I know, Trustee Minato, I brought this presentation because of incidences of violence with staff. I know I've heard it from teachers, that there's all this violence and acts towards staff by students. When you look at the numbers, the numbers don't really show that it's all the time. So I'm just trying to connect the dots on what, what we're hearing versus what this is saying, and where is that middle? Where's the, where's the disconnect? Is it perceived at the school site? Is it not being documented correctly? Because I personally thought I would see higher numbers. I don't like the numbers the way they are, but I personally thought the numbers would be higher based on some of the things that you hear. So that's why I asked about, you know, how many times is happening? Because maybe it's, I don't know, the same student, the same schools, and as they kind of work their way through, it impacts so many teachers. It seems like it's so many, but it's really one or two students, they've just impacted so many teachers or staff members, so...
Dr. McNeil?
So I think part of the issue, too, is by the time, you know, you all hear about them, or they come up to my level, they're significant, and, and they're very, very serious as far as what can actually happen in the classroom. And, you know, when we're talking about some of the impact that this happens, you know, during the day, it is significant, and, and it can really interfere with the actual functioning of an entire school. You know, when, when a student acts out, there are certain types of activities that the teacher has to do, and whether that's, you know, evacuating the classroom, whether that's separating the student, whether that's a certain type of protective hold that the teachers are trained in. These are all types of issues that happen. And so although the numbers, when we're talking, like Dr. Lamarcus said, about 64,000 students, what you're seeing here are the most significant types of incidences that happen. And it is not, I don't want anybody to, to, to go away with that we're minimizing, because each one of these behaviors, and each time one of our staff or our students are injured, it is significant. But I think what you're, what you're beginning to understand, it's resources, it's federal, it's state laws that the districts are bound to. And then also, what's in the best interest, in interest of the student on a very personal level and a very individualized level. And I think part of the frustration, and I know Tom Staus is there in the back, I think part of the frustration that we hear from the teachers, as well as our administrators, is the amount of time that it takes, and it seems like it takes in order for an intervention or an alternative placement to take, to take place. But there are very restrictive practices that the, that the teachers and the principals and our instructional coordinators have to follow for that.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. You know, I, looking at the data, too, I thought the numbers would be higher, although what I see is still uncomfortably high, but I thought they would be higher. But what, what the data shows me is that violence or harm to staff and threats to staff from students has been going up. It's been going up at the secondary level, it's been going up at the elementary level, just clear jumps each year. And so I'm just trying to, I mean, that concerns me. There's, I understand there's state and federal laws that might prevent the district from doing things to protect our staff, but I'm just trying to wrap my mind around what, what can we do to protect our staff more? To try to get these numbers to level out, or better yet, to start going down. And that's, I think that's one of the reasons why I was happy that this was, was coming up, because, you know, there's things I could see us doing, but then, you know, maybe a state law or federal law prevents, prevents us from doing it. But I, I want to see us get creative. I want to see us try to find some ways to protect our staff. I mean, I, I hear a lot of instances of, you know, for instance, a special need, special needs high school student, a male who's 15 or 16, a big guy, big kid, who's in a room with a little petite female teacher, or maybe two female teachers. And so that's an instance where, you know, bodily harm, I think, could happen easily, whereas maybe it would have been better to have a male teacher, a bigger man, like, can those kind of things be looked at? Or is that discrimination or something? So that's one question I had. Another comment I had was, at the beginning, you had mentioned that, you know, you want to, you looked at this through an equity lens, and you didn't want to have, if one group of students was causing more violence to staff, you didn't, and then now that that same group of students has more disciplinary against them, that you wanted to make sure that that wasn't an inequitable sort of situation. But I don't see it that way. I see it as if one group of students is causing more violence, it makes sense that that same group of students would also be getting more punishment. And so I, I mean, I still have a couple more questions, but maybe I'll stop there for now, and just, let's think of ways that we can protect our staff more.
So along the lines of the, the high school, yes, there, you can be creative. And a lot of times, our high school administration will be creative. I am aware of a situation with one high school where there's a male student who is more aggressive than, you know, his counterparts, or he is an aggressive student, and they have it so that he is only with the male teachers. And they, they reconfigured their staffing to address that. The male student, if, if he's upset and he's already aggressing, he will, if he sees a female, he will go for that female. There's already a plan in place that, that only males respond, the school police officer responds, and so that those systems have been put in place. So if we know that the trigger is going to be gender-based, which does happen, then the schools typically will have that system in place to protect the student and the staff. Obviously, the last thing we want to do is, is have staff harmed. I completely agree. Do you want to address the...
Sure, but, Mr. Kelly, to your question about, or your statement about disproportionality, I do think we owe it to you at the appropriate time to bring more information, to really kind of tease that apart. That's a pretty complicated issue. We have done it in the past to an extent, but I think there's other information that you would find useful. Part of what I said, and I probably did not use very good language, but when we look at similar events, so two boys that have been in a fight, what we find is that a bloke... at similar events, so two boys that have been in a fight, what we find is that a black boy is suspended more often and for longer than a white boy. So that's what I meant by the disproportionality in terms of discipline. There are also factors that may contribute to more violence by certain groups that have to do with access, implicit bias, and that's where it gets really thorny. And I do think at an appropriate time, we owe you that conversation, because it's something we're trying to learn from as well. It is very difficult and complicated. I do think it's worthwhile, just to touch briefly on some of what we are doing in response. We have a program, it's a violence intervention program, it's been in the district for some period of time. A student that commits one of these violent offenses as part of their suspension, as part of their discipline, they are expected to attend what we call VIP. This is a four-part course. They are supposed to attend it with a parent. It is very similar to our substance abuse programming. It is a strong, good program. The problem primarily with it is it is centrally located, it doesn't exist in every building, and so some families have to travel significant distances in order to get to it. Again, this is a resource issue. We've done the best that we can, or we're, we're attempting to do things outside the box to bring these programs to schools, as opposed to expecting families to go to like a central location on four consecutive weeks on a Thursday evening from seven to nine to Worcester High School to receive this kind of information. That's one example of, of support that is provided. More importantly, I wanted to bring your attention to this, and this is really for schools. This is a kind of a one-stop-shop referral form. It's at our MTSS site. If a school is struggling with a particular student, they can go to this form, they fill out some basic information. It's longer than the three questions you see there, but it's not super long, because we have access to Infinite Campus and a variety of information. Critically important is they can click here whether they are requesting behavioral support, whether they feel they need a hearing, whether they feel they want a referral to what we call DIAT, District Intervention Assistance Team, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. Or if they need a, a, a student attendance review board hearing, so, because if, like the problem is related to attendance. It's, it's very easy to use, it gets to the staff immediately, we're able to respond almost immediately to schools. I wanted to bring this to your attention, we wanted to bring this to your attention. I do want you to leave with a lot of things, and this is difficult kind of stuff. But one of the things I do want you to leave with is at least hearing is, say, our commitment is to schools and providing support. The district intervention assistance team is, is sort of the district's answer. Remember, I mentioned that each school has an intervention assistance team. So whenever there's a problem within a school with a particular student, this intervention assistance team is really trying to review that case, hopefully on like a bi-weekly basis. You know, is, is Paul getting the appropriate supports Paul needs? What are the supports Paul needs? He's not responding, what do we try next? That sort of a thing. When the school has exhausted their ability to sort of meet the needs of Paul, they will use that form, they will ask for support from the district, and we will staff Paul at this district intervention assistance team. That's a, that's a cross-agency group. We always have human servants, human services agency there, we have children's cabinet there, we often have juvenile services there, we have other providers that are there. Because often, when we see that a child isn't responding to these tier-one, tier-two, tier-three strategies, there's usually much more going on in this child's life that's contributing. So we use this as a problem-solving body to provide a plan to the school. It often results in us sending out behavioral staff to provide sort of direct support for a student. But it also allows us to connect the dots. Is this a child living in trauma? Is there a caseworker involved through human services? Is there probation involvement? How do we make sure we're getting the family, their needs met? So we often will be at a DIAT, and the next thing we know, we're providing referrals for a family to visit Family Resource Centers, because we just realize that there, there are significant problems that are contributing to what we're seeing at the school site.
Just really quickly, I just want to bring up, the DIAT system is, is very unique within school districts. This is not something that every single school district has, and this is at a national model. When we're talking about, some of the times when you're an administrator, just as, as Mrs. Maribel was saying, as far as you, you feel like you're on an island, what the DIAT allows the administrator to be able to do is to bring and staff a child with all of the agencies around the table, like Dr. Lamarcus was saying. Because a lot of times juvenile probation, or children's cabinet, or health and human services may have additional knowledge that the school does not have. And so having those agencies around the table is extremely helpful to the school district as far as finding out what are some of the other services and, and missing links that we don't always know about the child.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I, I would just like, first of all, thank you for your work. This is, this is quite extensive and good information, I think, for us to know as a board. So thank you, trustee Manetto, for asking that this come forward. I think that's, that's really, really important. I also think that, as you said, Dr. Lamarcus, that there's a need to go deeper so that we can, we can take a look at the equitable practices that, that I think as a board we're all committed to. Because one of the things that I, I would want to, to really just, just caution our colleagues, my, my colleagues, is all that's wonderful if everything's the same. But we recognize, we should recognize that everything is not the same, and that for the same infraction, oftentimes, students that are marginalized get penalized more. There's plenty of research to back that up. In addition, as you said, students that are disabled also get penalized more for, for the same infraction. And so to say, hey, you know, that we have to make sure that, hey, if it's more, it's more, we have to look at the whys behind that before we take unwise action to really look at, what are those sort of things, those things that we should be doing to mitigate those, those inequities? And so that we, at the end of the day, we want to give everybody an equitable opportunity to, to do their best work, to be their best student, to achieve their absolute best. And that means that we have to have the courage as a board to take a look at those things that influence that. And so I would, I would suggest that we absolutely do that, go for, let's take a deeper dive, because I think that's a very fair question to ask if we, if we don't know, so let's know. Let's make sure that we all know, so that we can know full good about what we're doing as a board.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Trustee Caddo?
Thank you. Quick question, something I've been thinking about. So I know when students go from grade to grade or school to school as they're progressing through our district, a lot of times, staff will maybe have some pointers or some, like a heads up for staff that'll work with a student in the next grade or the next school, on maybe how to deal with that student. And I'm wondering if there is a, a formal process and how staff essentially will communicate these issues to each other? Because what I can see happening is almost that student gets painted with a bad brush, and no matter what that student does, they're always going to be the bad kid. And I know this one touches me, because in, in my line of work, a lot of times you have students that are maybe a behavior problem at one university, and they go to another university, maybe our university, and you hear all these bad things about that student, like, I haven't met him yet, and I'm already being told how bad of a person this student is, where maybe they have turned the page, they just need a fresh start. And I can see that happening here, you know, a fifth grader has problems, they go to middle school, and they're doing better, and they want to kind of start fresh, but the middle school staff has been, already been told how bad of a student this person is, and this student hasn't even walked in the front door, and they're already ready, and how troubled this individual's going to be. And now they just cannot get that, get away from that. And then high school, the same thing. Is there a formal process in how teachers can help each other with students while not basically paying a student as, as bad before they have even walked in the door?
I don't know that there's necessarily a formal process, and I completely agree with you that that happens more often than not, unfortunately. You know, oh, you're getting that kid next year, ooh, good luck. You know, you, you hear those comments. That's, to me, that would be where that school administration needs to say, hold on. You know, a child needs a fresh start every year, and that's part of that culture and climate, and there was SEL techniques that are set up in a building, so that every year is a fresh start, every year, every, to me, every day is a new day. Every child should get a fresh start when they walk in the door in the morning. So what we would hope would happen, or expect, actually, what we expect to happen, is if a child has the behaviors, there should be a behavior plan or positive behavior support system that is following that child along, so that that information is being provided to the next level, so that they know what works. Hopefully, we've identified what level of support the child needs, and we have figured out what's, what works for them. Now, we don't always know for certain, I mean, because, so, for example, research shows that to change a, a person's behavior, it is six to eight weeks at, on average. So if you think about that, that's a quarter of a school year that you are working to change a child's behavior, or, or anyone's behavior, for that matter. So if it's taking a quarter to even see if that, the interventions you have in place are working, well, what if they're not? So you have to give it more time, so you have another six, eight weeks tops. So it can take half a year or even longer, even to be able to figure out what exactly is working to change that child's behavior. And that's, you know, when we only have 180 school days, those days burn up really fast. And so it's hopefully that that information is going forward to the next school, that they say, okay, we've tried this, this part didn't work, here are some other ideas that we would like, you know, that may work in your environment. And it may just be changing the classroom environment, maybe it just wasn't a good fit with that teacher, or the, there were kids in that class that caused some of those concerns. And it is, like, I've had numerous teachers go, I don't know what they were talking about from last year, this is the best kid in my class. So we can see that that also, that environmental influence is just changing those dynamics can have an impact on it as well.
Yeah, because we talked about triggers, and a student's behavior definitely can be impacted. It's the second day of school, and the teacher's already, teacher doesn't like me, I'm being kind of, I'm not being included, because maybe that teacher received a report that this is, I mean, you got to be careful, this student, watch out. And that can trigger students if, if they're counted out, depending on what the behaviors those students displays. And so I didn't know if they're, I mean, I know it's hard to have like a formal process, but maybe more staff dialogue from administration about, we need to give every student a chance, we need to have this information, it's good to know, so it can help staff be better at, at their jobs on a day-to-day, and, and, you know, utilize the expertise of the staff that had the student before, without essentially saying from the start, you're, you're bad. And that's an issue.
Just really quickly, I think it, it might be a good idea to maybe talk about, just very briefly, the very structured process for transition-type meetings, which is very different. But, you know, when, when a child is transitioning out of PASS, or when a child is transitioning out of Inspire, and what that discussion looks like with the school staff. Because that's key as far as when a child transitions out of a particular program into a, a different school, that is a really different types of, of structured setting.
Thank you. Transition is the most sensitive time, for sure. And, and I thought initially what you were referring to is even students with IEPs, when they transition schools, there is a transition IEP meeting in which what you're talking about should occur between the teams. But we do spend a lot of time with transition, when students come to us, say, from a detention center, from a residential treatment center, from Inspire back, you know, they've been placed out for a while, and then they go from Inspire back to their home school. We, we do meet with the collective school staff. We try to talk about, when we do it with juvenile services for kids that are on probation or parole, we meet with the student, we focus in on strengths, we try to find out what they're interested in, we do try to address sort of past harms, how we can get past that. We try to do everything we can to set the child up for success. That is an area where we have a lot of growth. I will just leave it at that, at this point.
Trustee Calvert?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to make a component of what Mr. Caddell was saying. Isn't there like confidentiality, I mean, with the students, as far as, I'm a student and you're going to give me a bad rep by saying, you know, I was in your class, and so how is that dealt with? And I do believe that is something that should be addressed, because to me, it does violate confidentiality by saying things about someone. Maybe they're true, but, I mean, going from one, because then that just progresses.
That, that's a very slippery slope, and you're right. So, so, and it, it's sort of, I mean, it's all over the board. So a, a teacher at a ninth grade, a teacher teaching ninth-grade students inherits a group of kids that came from middle school, she or he then has access to those students and their records within Infinite Campus. And so in terms of documented behavioral problems, in terms of multi-tiered systems of support and perhaps behavior plans or academic plans, that teacher has that available to him or her. And that doesn't violate FERPA, it's actually necessary, but if not used professionally, it could lead to problems. And so if a school, for example, inherits some kids, and all they look at is the number of major behaviors, they might go, oh my gosh, what do we got here? That's not appropriate. I will tell you that our partners through juvenile services and our partners through Human Service Agency, Social Services, they get very nervous when we share information about, for example, foster care, or child living in transition, or a child who's on probation or parole, and for the exact reasons that you're stating. It's, how is that information going to be used? And it's a real balance, right? Because at, at one level, we want the school to have all the information they need to best support a child. And unfortunately, that same information, if used poorly, is what can lead to that, you know, that scarlet letter and that target. We constantly work with our schools on that. Every, everything we talk to them about, we have an issue going on right now with the school. And, and it's, and really, I promise you, the school's wanting to meet the kids' needs, and they don't think they can at this particular location, but they don't have a choice. Okay? And so that's what we're trying to get them past, is you need to stop looking at the past and look forward to how we support this child, knowing some of what's gone on. And it's a very difficult balance.
Mr. Nogal?
So just to add some perspective to that, because I think trustee Caddell and trustee Calvert are absolutely right. I know of multiple instances in which teachers, not even rolling to disciplinary issues, simply badmouth students that they do not like, and they badmouth students to other teachers. They talk about it in private, maybe in off-hours, when they are not strictly expected to maintain, well, a level of respect for privacy. And so I don't really see how it would be possible even to stop that, because it occurs quite often, and not even with discipline, with very mild things. If a student just pisses them off, they'll begin to badmouth that student. Granted, they have a stressful job, but still, it's, it's very damaging.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. Just a comment and then a question. Or the comment is, I've heard from teachers that said that they just didn't realize when they went into a type of position, or to work with the type groups of students, or to go to a certain school, or whatever, they just didn't realize how violence or the threat of violence would be so much a part of their job. And so my comment is, on a human resources standpoint, and I looked at some of our job descriptions that the district has had for, you know, certain types of positions, they don't really, they don't talk too much about, you know, violence or the expectation of potential violence. I just think that's something that if we let our teachers know upfront, you know, hey, we really, this is a great position, that can do really good work, but just be aware that this is a group of, of students, or this is a type of, an age, or just something that could lead to, I think if we let teachers know that upfront, they're just, and they still go for the position, they're just in a better place to say, okay, I, I realize that I'm going to get, I might get injured from time to time because I, I chose to work with students. I just think that would be good for our staff to know ahead of time. And the question that I had was, so a different, different topic. On the slide where battery to district employee causing injury, there's a note that said, note that for a special education student, battery must result in severe bodily injury. I'm just wondering about that word, se- I'm just wondering about that word, severe. I mean, is that, is that a state or federal law that says it has to be severe before you start doing the first, second, third incidents? Or is that something that the district has said, it needs to be severe? Because I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, what if we took out the word severe? Bodily injury can result in first or second or third incident resolution. So talk to me a little bit about why the word severe is in there and, you know, what's the logo room on that?
So you brought up a, and I'm just gonna address the first, your first comment. You brought a very interesting point, because when we look at our pre-educ, you know, people who are going into the education field, there's no class that they take that says, hey, here's how you handle extreme behaviors. They are not trained in behavior, they are trained in classroom management, they are trained in pedagogy. And so part of the work that we need to continue to work on is, is working with our teachers on how to, to address those behaviors. And so it's that, again, it's that tier-one support. What does it look like now? What can we do to help our teachers? Because you're right, they, and it doesn't matter if they walk into a strategies classroom, or PASS, or Turning Point, it could be your regular run-of-the-mill kindergarten class and, you know, they think, oh, look at these great cute babies, and then you have one that just, you know, comes in and destroys the classroom. So it is definitely something that I think that Dr. Lamarcas' group and our group are working together to come up with a strategy and plan how, how to support teachers better in identi, in learning how to work with behaviors. We just, it's just not an area of expertise in the educational field, and we need to, to work towards that. We do have board-certified behavior analysts in our school district, the BCBAs, that are able to come in and support our, our teachers on, they are trained in, they're board-certified in behavior analysis. And so being able to work with those teachers to say, here's what's happening, here's why it's happening, and here's how we, we can address that. And so along those lines, looking to get more support from those departments and those, from those people to help teachers truly understand how behaviors are working in a classroom. And I think that is a trend, you know, nationally that we're seeing, is that the behaviors are changing. They're, they're definitely exposed to more at a younger age than we ever have seen before. And so I think that's something that we are designed to, to work towards.
And I see our chief HR officer, Ms. Ellison, just walked in the door. So did you want to say anything, Emily?
I just wanted to be here in case I forgot.
Okay. So just really quickly, I think that, you know, we have our new hire orientation, and as Ms. Van Tress said, this is a national issue. And we talk a lot, you all have heard me say before, that our students come to schools a lot more than just books in their backpack. We're talking about severe trauma, we're talking about food scarcity, we're talking about child abuse, we're talking about home environments, and our teachers do an amazing job, and so do our principals and our counselors and our social workers. Five years ago, we had two social workers in our school district. Now we have how many, Catherine?
So we're about to onboard 41 more, in addition to the 23 that we had before, 5 that we have before that.
So just, just to know that we're having more additional types of these, you know, positions as far as social workers, that's, that's a huge effort as far as providing mental health support for our schools. And we are by no means at that point in time. And I just want to address really quickly something that Mr. Noble brought up. As far as being a professional, right, our teachers and our principals and, and all staff need to be sure that they are, that they are acting responsibly and, and professional at all times. And if they're not, and if it's brought to the attention of their supervisor, that needs to be dealt with, absolutely.
Let me...
I think, yeah, there was more.
Yeah, I want to answer Mr. Kelly's question. It's more of a technical question. The, the word severe comes from the federal legislation. Sometimes in, in, you also hear substantial, I think I used the word substantial before as opposed to severe. Severe is in the law. It's not in the state statute, it's in the federal statute. But what our state statute always reminds us in virtually every section is, oh, don't forget, you have to follow the federal laws that relates to students with disabilities.
Trustee Manetto?
I want to say thank you. I especially like the, we're not sending the kids home anymore. You know, we can have in-house suspension, and that always makes lots more sense to me than send them home where you don't know what's happening. I think, you know, it's just a big thing. And of course, here I am thinking about, you know, what happens to the kids on IEPs when they go out in the world? Because they think this is okay, and it's not. And that's why teachers are saying a lot of kid, people, I mean, I was at three schools in the last few months that I saw kids hitting teachers. It wasn't substantial, but they're getting hit. And that's, you know, it could cause bruise or just, why are you hitting me? This is not okay. Yeah, anyway, I'm naturally concerned about when they become adults.
Well, thank you. I feel like we've had some really great conversation around this and maybe barely touched the surface. Obviously, this is a really complicated issue that compounds a lot of things beyond just equity, but I think, you know, we've talked a lot about trauma. I would just say that I think we're fortunate in this district to have our, you know, social work grant, the recognition from the state that some of this is beyond just a behavior matrix, that we need to look at social-emotional learning on a bigger scale. And so I think there's obviously much more that goes into all this. I don't know if it's an appropriate time to request this, but I do think, just from what we've discussed today, that this seems like the kind of thing that, you know, maybe every year or six months or so, we kinda get an update and sort of see how things are trending and see if there's more to learn, so we don't wait too long to have the conversation again. So, I, I believe we have a few public comments, so.
Tammy Berg?
Thank you. My name is Tammy Berg. I am the parent of a son with a mental health and substance abuse issue. He is not in the district anymore. I was also an aide in a CLS classroom a few years back. And yes, I've been hit, but it came with the territory is the way I explain it. And, so this kind of allows me to have a little bit of a unique perspective on a couple of these things, especially the behavioral matrix and such. And I kinda want to make comments about two things. One is the manifestation hearing and one of the slides that Dr. Lamarcas showed. So manifestation hearings include staff there at a zoned school. And my concern with that, I've sat through a couple, and, and I'll put it this way, a couple of them went my child's way, and one of them did not go his way, which we disagreed with, but you, you, you roll with it. I kind of feel like the staff members need better training on understanding the multitude of disabilities and what they are. That particular manifestation hearing, one of the staff members asked what ODD and RAD was. So she did not even understand two of the major diagnoses that my son has, and yet was able to sit and vote and offer whether it didn't have anything to do with his disability when he was there. The other one has to do with the DIAT slide that was up. We, we keep talking about family engagement in this district, and I'm, I'm a little disappointed in that particular slide, because it says referrals to parenting classes, but it doesn't say anything about further training for staff. And, and, and I'll say it from the personal standpoint, it's not necessarily in my son's case that staff needed training on what the, what the diagnoses were, but when you continually tell a teacher that, you know, if you call him out in class, you're gonna see behaviors and, you know, you need to know what he's, what he's trained in, but, or what he's learned, if you continue to call him out, you're gonna get problems. So I just kind of feel like some of that needs to, to be adjusted. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Staus?
Vice President Raymond, members of the board, interim superintendent McNeil, Tom Staus, executive director for the Washoe Education Association. I wanted to just mention that we appreciate the board and the district reviewing this issue. I can tell you, as someone who works with our educators, we represent about 2,500 of them, that when we, we receive calls and concerns from threats of violence, or actually receiving violence, that it's a big deal for our educators. And I know the board knows that. It's not just an issue that's happening nationally, it's also an issue that's happening here. And it doesn't matter if it's one, or if I read the report correct, 228 issues of threats or violence. When you're that teacher that's in a classroom trying to educate 30 to 40 students, and you're receiving those kinds of behaviors, it is a big deal for that educator and for that teacher. We've had a lot of conversations with the district. The district has been wonderful in working with the association. As Dr. McNeil mentioned earlier, we know this comes down to funding, the need for more funding, more, more supports. And I can tell you that from the phone calls that we receive in the association, that's what our folks are crying out for, is more support. Because when they receive those incidents in the classroom, and sometimes folks feel like they're out there having to deal with those behaviors themselves. And our principals have been great, and Paul Lamarcas' office have been great, and special ed has been great. But I would just mention that this is a big issue for our folks. And I hope it's not an issue that just comes back once a year for a report to the board, that we can continue to work with the district, and the superintendent, and Dr. Lamarcas' office in special ed, to continue to try to find ways to support, better support our educators who are having to deal with these issues in the classroom. We appreciate what the district is doing in this regard, but I just wanted to mention that for the record. Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
May I make one final comment?
Yes.
And we should have mentioned this already, but really, two final comments. One, through the strategic plan reporting, I do believe we can come to you fairly regularly, at least with pieces of this. And then the second piece I want to add, as part of Dr. McNeil's 120-day plan, we are launching a school climate slash student behavior committee. WEA is involved with that, as is the Principals Association. We, we will have our first kind of inaugural meeting either on October 14th or 16th. We're kinda like getting everyone assembled. It will have probably five administrators, five or six teachers, several key district staff members, including Ms. Van Tress and myself. And that committee is, the, the idea is to continue to look at these issues, think outside the box, perhaps come up with potential budgetary requests. So this is not a one-and-done kind of a presentation.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. It was a great opportunity for us to learn more, and hopefully we can all find a way to help improve this. We've been sitting for quite a while, and I know everyone's waiting to get through this, but I think I personally need a little break, so if we could take a 10-minute break before your next presentation, Dr. Lamarcas. So maybe let's say we're back here at 6:55, if that works for everybody. Okay.
All right, I think I will call the meeting back to order. We're waiting for a couple people to take their seats, but we do have a quorum, and we'll move on to agenda item number 5.05, sort of continuation of our previous agenda item, a presentation of the Student Behavior Manual and Matrix, which constitutes the Progressive Discipline Plan for the Washoe County School District, in accordance with Nevada revised statute, chapter 392, pupils, for information and discussion only. And it's Dr. Lamarcas.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond, interim superintendent Dr. McNeil, members of the board, for the record, Paul Lamarcas, chief ombudsman, strategies officer. This presentation is about this document, which I do believe you have, and I, I hope that you have had some chance to review it. I will try to be as brief, though, some of it is duplicative, so I will skip over those parts where it's duplicative, in the interest of time. The, the manual itself is, it's a, it's a kind of a work in progress. It's always dynamic, it's updated annually. It includes a key piece in the appendix called Behavioral Matrix. The Behavioral Matrix for years was the discipline plan, but now we've kind of surrounded it with some other support materials for schools. Basically provides our philosophy, it, it spends a lot of time talking about the big three, it talks about supports for non-big-three behaviors, talks about our school-level progressive discipline committees, which is critical. We spend time talking about student transitions, we spent some time earlier tonight talking about that. Has some information around our threat inquiry process that at some point I would really like you to take a look at. And then it has our behavioral matrix, which is kind of the core of, of the document. Has some supports for special education, has some information around the bully investigation process, all of which I think are important. Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of skip the next two slides, because it's really duplicative. We, we put all this through our multi-tiered systems of support, we use our equity lens, and we can come back to this if necessary. I do want to touch a little bit on this, community matters and instruction matters. And, and I'd argue that some of what we were talking about before gets at this. Climate has everything to do with student learning. It's through a school climate in which we optimize student learning. You know, often when we're thinking about instruction, we hear words such as, we have to have relevant curriculum, we, we have to have engaging curriculum, we have to have students that accept feedback. This is all built on relationships with students. Relationships are sort of the core of, of climate. And, and I will argue or suggest that that's as important for the student as it is for the teacher. So a teacher that has a strong classroom climate is not likely to, to experience some of the issues that we talked about earlier. They won't prevent everything, but they'll prevent a lot of the things we've been talking about. Structure is key. When, when we're uncertain, even as adults, we behave strangely. So we thrive on structure, we thrive on predictability, kids especially. If they know what to expect, then they tend to do what we expect. And so it's critical that our expectations in a classroom are similar across classrooms, and they're similar to the school as a whole. And when we see that, kids tend to do very well. It also breeds self-efficacy. So we do want kids to take risks, we want them to take chances, but they'll do this when they feel safe. And that comes through a structured, predictable environment. This is when students will thrive and learn. Part of the reason why we think it's important to talk about this is, just quickly back to that MTSS structure, sort of the social well-being of students, behavior, academics, they all fit together. They're not separate and distinct, they're all part of the same thing. I do want to talk a little bit about some revisions to Nevada revised statute, which led to many of the changes within the manual. I'm gonna focus on Assembly Bill 168. We also had Assembly Bill 490 and Assembly, or Senate Bill 89, all of which talked about the need to start using restorative practices as a non-traditional way to address discipline. I also listed Senate Bill 80. This is something at a later time we'll probably bring to you. This is the Handle with Care Bill. This is one that's gonna force us, and rightfully, to focus around trauma-informed practices, working with students who've experienced lots of trauma. Key changes stemming from 168. The clear intent of this bill was to limit suspension days. Taking kids out of instructor, out of instruction is probably gonna limit their ability to learn. So if you're going to limit suspension, what are you going to do instead? And I believe this is where this concept of restorative practices is coming into place. There's a very strong misnomer around restorative practices. It's, let's be soft on kids. It's not about being soft on kids, it's about attending to victims and to the community as a whole, holding kids accountable, but in appropriate ways. Changes to the big three. So, we talked about a big three earlier. Dangerous weapons, battery on staff, and... Dangerous weapons, battery on staff, and distribution of controlled substances. So there's no change with possession of a dangerous weapon, but with battery and with distribution for a first offense, legislation is requiring us to attempt to use restorative practices and planning to keep a child in a school before considering removal. So for a first offense of battery, or for distribution, the law's telling us we should be keeping the kid in the school with a restorative plan. If we see, or the school believes, and we can justify that, that there is a significant, and I stress the word significant, safety concern, then we can still move a child, but wouldn't necessarily be to like Inspire or Turning Point, like we discussed earlier. It might be to a different comprehensive setting. Okay? That's a big change. That's a big change to our schools. Changes associated with very young children. So with children that are 10 years of age and younger, and that's really by and large 5th graders and younger, the law is super restrictive on any movement. In fact, it's pretty much saying, do not move a child who's 10 and younger, because they can't intend to do the things that you'd be moving them for. Again, there is an out. If there is a significant substantial safety concern, the District can, at times, place a child into a different school. But it wouldn't be a school like Washoe Inspire, it would be a different comprehensive campus in almost all instances. All right? That's a big change as well. Now, our movements from elementary level over to something like Inspire, annually, we're talking very few kids, you know, on an annual basis, like five, seven maybe, but now it's none, virtually. Consistency in behavioral expectations, consistency in enforcement. As you, I think you may know, we have developed this Behavioral Matrix, and it's been a default plan for our schools for several years now, but that was unique to Washoe County. The law is now requiring each District to have its own progressive discipline plan that's used by every school. Schools can add to it, but the reason for this, I believe, is just to have consistency across all schools. And in a big system like ours, that's really critically important. Student transitions. Again, student transitions is the Achilles' heel of all these processes. And it's important as part of this law, because of those instances in which we have to move a child, there's emphasis in the law about having appropriate planning at the receiving school to meet the child's needs. The other thing to remember, when we place a student into a different location, that is almost always for a temporary period of time. So they're coming back. So the emphasis is on providing a behavioral plan as they go, working on the transition that whole time, so when they come back, they've got a fresh start. All right. Manual revisions. So in the manual itself, you'll see things that are highlighted, and those kind of like highlight the big changes. And we did that for our administrators primarily. So our administrators have to review this document, and we wanted to make it as easy as possible, so we tried to highlight the big changes. There are a couple of changes that are in the manual that weren't really prompted by changes to law, but we felt, just given patterns of behavior, they were important. We've got real problems in our schools with vape devices and vaping, and it's related to actually the collection of contraband. So, you know, a vape device is a personal piece of property, and we've actually had situations in which we try to confiscate it, and then a family retrieves it because they own it. So we've got some strong language in the manual about if that happens more than once, we're keeping it till the end of the school year. And then Ms. Sessions, part of our compliance office, she updated all of our bullying investigation protocols, and you'll find that on the last pages of the manual. Statutory requirements regarding the adoption of the District Progressive Discipline Plan. So we disseminated this draft to all schools just prior to the beginning of the school year. It's a pretty laborious process to get the thing changed over time, but we disseminated it to all schools. Schools then had an obligation to do two things. One, elect their progressive discipline committees, and there's language both in our manual and in the law about how they go about doing that. The Committee has a principal or a designee, it has elected teachers, it has elected classified staff. That team with the principal is responsible for reviewing the manual, they can make suggestions for changes to the manual, they can also signal to us if they're adding to it. They can't really take anything away, because of the state law now says you have to use it, but they can add to it. And so we provide an opportunity for them to do that. They have to provide us sort of documentation of their review by September 15th, and I'm glad to say we've got all of those back, except three, and reminders are out, and we will get those as well. We have an obligation, well, we have an obligation eventually to submit to the State Department of Education that we're in full compliance, or we have to list out any schools that haven't followed this process. So if the three schools don't follow the process, which they will, the State will know about that. Stakeholder review. I do want you to be aware that we presented the plan to our Council on Family Engagement, we presented the plan to our Student Advisory Committee, we presented the plan to our Equity and Diversity Task Force. We worked with WEA to get some of the WEA reps to have a chance to look at the plan, as well as some of the leadership within WEA. We've had several administrators that have been reviewing it. In addition to this mandatory review, they helped actually put it together. So it's been reviewed pretty comprehensively, and we tried to give as much time as possible to get comments. The next step, we wanted to provide this informational kind of just session for you. We will be seeking Board adoption in October, and by November 15th, we have to submit to the State of Nevada that we have a plan that's been adopted by the Board of Trustees. That is, that's all I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do the trustees have any questions? We've talked quite a bit about this this evening, so we do have a public comment.
Tammy Berg.
I'll kind of skip over a couple of things, because I did talk about a couple of things before. This manual does have some great things in it, and I do want to make sure I point that out. I'm extremely excited that this District is going to be doing restorative practices. I think Innovations High School, when I learned about that, my son attended for a short amount of time, it was a fabulous way to help adjust kids who are having behavioral issues. So I appreciate that very much. So some of my, some of them are going to be addressed as questions, but I know you can't respond. But there are several instances where a student with an IEP is listed in under IDA, but it was my understanding that a 504 was also there, but I know that we don't, the District separates those two when it comes to discipline. And I think that that's a huge concern, because many of your kids who are on 504s are on 504s because of behavioral issues. My son, in fact, was one, but didn't qualify for an IEP. So I think that that's something that still needs to be looked at within this plan. I talked about staff being trained for MDR stuff, so I won't talk about that again. Let's see here, sorry, reading my notes. Oh, there is a part under Student Discipline Hearing Process, Point 4, that states that the family has a right to bring an advocate to a hearing. How would a parent know that? Because it was my son's second 504 meeting at high school as a freshman, before I even knew that I had the ability to have a 504 advocate with me. Someone who was, I don't hate to put it that way, but on my side as far as how things could be handled in the school district. The manual also states, student work should be provided while a student is out on emergency suspension. How is a parent supposed to be able to pick up work like that if the entire time that the school office is open? How do they get there and get that information? I know specifically that when my child was at Jan Evans, I know there's two teachers at Jan Evans, but when my son was at Jan Evans, I had to go retrieve specific classroom material to take to him. And that's not the way, if we're wanting to bring them back to their own schools, you're not going to be able to keep them up. Yeah, and I think I covered the other stuff later, so thank you.
Dr. LaMarcus, would you like to respond to?
Yeah, I would. I think those are actually all very important points that were brought up, and I'd be happy to meet with Ms. Berg at a later point in time. I do want to make you aware that she is correct, that all of the protections within IDEA that apply to students with IEPs are also extended to students with 504s. So all of the restrictions we talked about, the 45 versus the 90, that is for 504 students as well. We echo her belief that staff needs better training around manifestation determination reviews. In terms of families having an advocate, and this is probably something that's important for you to know. So when a student is suspended on an emergency basis, that kicks into process some paperwork, one of which is a form that goes to family provided by the school that details the hearing process, it should, this is what should occur, that details the hearing process, including those points which include the ability to bring an advocate. So anyone that's coming to a hearing should be notified in advance and know that they have that right. Student work during suspension. I just want to comment just briefly on the Jan Evans piece. That's a difficult situation. So Jan Evans is the June Off Facility, and so if a student gets arrested on campus or in the community, they might be spending a little bit of time at Jan Evans. We do have a presence of Inspire at Jan Evans. As soon as a student gets to Jan Evans, and we know that they're going to be there overnight, Jan Evans staff contacts the school staff, the home school staff, and indicates that Paul is going to be at Jan Evans, we don't know for how long, please send us any work so that Paul can continue. If Paul is there for less than 20 days, I would actually remain enrolled at my home school. If I'm there for more than 20 days, I get switched over to Inspire. While we do those notifications, I will say that we don't always get the work, and so kids at Jan Evans will often get kind of merged over into our, sort of our online system of instruction.
All right. Well, this was again just for information and discussion, and so we'll hear back from you in October with the final draft, I take it.
We will probably have that on the consent agenda, but of course, we would be ready for questions if you have questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Agenda Item 5.06, Presentation and Discussion on the Washoe County School District Information and Cyber Security Program, and the Review and Approval Process of Digital Learning Programs in the Schools. And this is for information and discussion only. Our two presenters are familiar faces. Mr. Robert Zidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer, and Mr. Alan Cunningham with Prop's Information Security Officer.
It's late at night, so I thought I'd bring some entertainment. [laughter] It's a mutual direct relation to the conversation, not just nice colored bottles.
All right. Thank you. I never thanked anybody for a virus before, but I'm not drinking it. Yeah, it's probably not on my meal plan anyway, so.
Too many on my tray.
Would love to, but.
Oops.
Good evening, Vice President Raymond and Board Members, and Interim Superintendent McNeil. Thank you for the chance to explain a little bit about our cybersecurity program. Just wanted to say, first of all, about three years ago, the Board took a decision to actually implement a cybersecurity group, which was a great decision at the time, that's why I'm actually employed, which is good for me. And that was, there was a number of factors that that came from. One of those factors was activism from our community, who were looking for that type of security. And also, at the time, our CIO realized that this was going to be a threat that was ever increasing, as we've seen. And just recently, we found out that Washoe County School District is one of only 12% of school districts nationwide in K-12 who actually have even an individual who is charged with IT security. Our sister District to the South has nobody with a title or that you can point to that is in charge of IT security. We have a team of three, which is, would probably put us in the top 4% or 5% in the nation for being forward-looking with cybersecurity. I wanted to give you an idea of the size of what we deal with, because personally, I had no idea when I first joined Washoe County School District, how much data and what we were dealing with. Average daily devices, we connect over 65,000 devices every single day. Those are wired devices and wireless devices. Average emails per day, about 280,000 in total. And we average those out over seven days, it's not just five days, because there's a lot of email stuff goes on at weekends, not only between staff members, but students as well. All right. So those little bottles I gave you, some of them are actually marked as viruses or a problem. And there should be 10 bottles, and 10 of those bottles represent one gallon, or one piece of data. So this represents an email. Right? This is the data for one email. Can you imagine Lake Tahoe? How many liters, or should I say gallons, of water would we have in Lake Tahoe? Quite a lot. We move that amount of data in and out of Washoe County School District every second of every day. Every second of every day. So if we have one of those little bottles that is marked as a problem, and some of them are not marked as a problem, it's a massive volume to try and find those little things that may be a problem. So that gives you an idea of how much data we move in and out of the school district every day. Daily numbers of things that we block, things that we look for in the security team every single day. Average 1,500 pieces of malware are caught by our antivirus system and with our blocking system that we have in place. So we do a really good job on that. Command and control requests, those are usually outbound, which means we may have a student device or a staff device that actually has some type of malware on it that's trying to call out to servers in China, servers in Russia, servers in Iran, Iraq. So we block those on average 70 a day. Phishing attempts, which are emails that are sent to staff usually, because at the moment, most students don't have external email, so it's mainly a staff issue, about 27. On average, we block 24,000 emails a day that come into the District. May 7th, we were getting hammered. It jumped up to 314,537. That's what happened, and we couldn't track back if it was a particular event, it was just a massive spike in emails that were coming into the District that we were blocking. So our information cybersecurity program. We have three dedicated and trained cybersecurity staff members, myself and two analysts, and we constantly monitor the network. We have multiple alerts set up, which go to emails and to our phones, we have the stipends on the phones, so we get those, much as Superintendent McNeil gets at 2, 3 in the morning, phone goes off, there's an alert, we take care of it. We do scanning and patching, which is extremely important, and that has been an ongoing process in the past three years since we came onboard, and it has improved vastly. Our IT network team has done a phenomenal task in bringing that, those patches down and down, and I don't think we've had a critical patch that we've had to look at in the past 12, 13 months. So the IT team are doing a great job on that. Endpoint and server protection, we have probably the best endpoint protection that money can buy, which was again a decision that the Board came to. It was actually the endpoint protection that they put in at the EPM breach, that actually found that they were exfiltrating data to China. So we have had no problems with our endpoints or our server protection. Phishing and scam response, we have SPAMScam as an email address which gets probably 30 to 40 on a quiet day, and I personally try and respond to each of those, thanking that staff member for being cautious and sending it to us first. We then- that staff member for being cautious and sending it to us first. We then investigate, uh, whatever the issue might be, whether it's the start of the iTunes scam card, which usually they see on their phone, which says it comes from Dr. McNeil, but it really doesn't. It comes from XYZ@gmail.com, but that doesn't show on the phone. Uh, we've had that from principals to board members. Uh, so that's something we watch for a lot, and we take care of that. User education, uh, personally, I have gone out to the Monty Ranch several times, and we're available for any other schools who would like to have further education on cybersecurity, uh, to try and help that because unlike most cybersecurity experts, I do not believe that our users are our weakest link. Our users are our strongest link. They're our first line, and we really need to look after them and educate them as much as time will allow. Unfortunately, nobody has enough time, so we have two, two items in school wires, uh, which every staff member has to go through every year, which for passwords and cybersecurity that we managed to get. So we're doing as much as we can on that user education. One that hit kind of close to home, and, uh, we discussed, or was discussed before, was the Lyon County ransomware incident. And we wanted to mention some of the things that, uh, allowed that to happen. Uh, we've been in contact with Lyon County, uh, to see if we can assist, uh, with any of the, the problems that they may be having. Uh, they kind of contributed most of the issues to outdated infrastructure, and devices, uh, were significant contributions. So they were not patching correctly. They had older versions of Windows 7, which are no longer supported by Microsoft, and the attackers really actually targeted that once they found it. Uh, they used some remote access tools and came in through a remote access part that was not correctly configured and correctly secured. And so we're preventing the ransomware attacks both from the endpoint, from our firewall. It's a multi-layered defense, uh, which is the most important way they do it. The way I look at it is how many times has Fort Knox been robbed in the past 50, 60 years? Not many times because there's multiple layers of defense. Hackers are in general lazy. They will go for the targets which are easiest to get into, and that's usually where it starts from, a phishing campaign. Right? They establish the layer. When we did our internal phishing campaigns, first of all, we started off with a 17% click-through, which meant 17% of staff clicked on that link and downloaded the problem. The second time we did it, it went to point 012. Right? And we didn't let staff know the second one was coming. They were starting to be aware. And the staff awareness has gone up hugely, which has made a massive improvement in the security district. We had the AmesWeb Pearson Data Security Incident, and I wanted to, uh, take a couple of minutes to just solidify and clarify exactly what happened with that. Uh, AmesWeb was accessed by an unauthorized third party, uh, November 2018 through their AmesWeb 1.0 product. Uh, they had a, a vulnerability in their web application that they didn't know about. Uh, over 13,000 AmesWeb customers were affected. And that's not 13,000 individuals, that's 13,000 entities, school districts, universities nationwide. Uh, for us, Washoe County School Districts, uh, we had 114,000, uh, individuals with first and last names and some birth dates. There were no student identifiers and very few emails. Right? Most of them were just first name and last name, some birth dates, no student IDs, or no unique identifiers were, uh, compromised, or should I say exposed, in this particular incident. Uh, there was no other information at all, just those, those fields. And Pearson was at fault and have admitted fault. Uh, all that information was on the website, uh, for anybody who wants to sign up for credit monitoring, for answering more questions. And we have answered a few questions that came up from, uh, parents, gone back to Pearson and got information and passed that back to those concerned parents. What's happening right now with school districts nationwide, uh, we had over 15 school districts in Texas alone, which were targeted by ransomware last month. They were an easy target. Right? Generally an easy target because they have low resources, they don't have security teams, that 12% figure enforces that. We are not as easy a target as those other school districts. And we will continue struggling and moving forward to make sure we're not an easy target for any of those hackers that happen to be out there. Uh, we've had, we've had requests from certain members of the public for results of an external pen test that we had done, that the board, uh, got funding for. Uh, we feel very strongly that we shouldn't give away the alarm code for the alarm in our house. You know, if you tell a burglar that you have XYZ type of alarm and this is the code, they're going to waltz in much easier. So there are certain things from a, a security standpoint that we need to keep confidential within the district. We understand that the public have concerns about that. We really need to decide or look at keeping those things confidential, I think. And if people have other questions, we're more than happy to try and clarify that situation. And now I'm going to pass it off to Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Uh, for the record, Robert Sidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer. Um, so regarding, uh, the, um, so another incident that occurred just recently, and you received an email from me, um, the evening that this occurred, uh, was an incident that we created ourselves, to be completely blunt and honest. Um, this was, uh, so on September 10th, um, a text message was sent to many, um, WCSD parents through a, a tool called School Messenger, which is a tool very similar to our, uh, ConnectEd that we use, um, that's used by Coral Academy, uh, one of our district-sponsored charter schools. That text message should only have gone to Coral Academy parents. Now, there was no information in there that was of any confidential nature, um, but that should have only gone to Coral Academy parents. The cause of that, we discovered, was the previous day, uh, and a, a, a data extract had been incorrectly programmed. Um, and so that, uh, basically, uh, meant that more data went to the company, the, uh, School Messenger that provides that service than should have gone. And so that's, that's what the cause of that was. This is where, um, making sure that our vendors are under contract with us is really very, very important because we worked with them immediately, and within a matter of, well, that same day, um, they had, uh, immediately deleted that additional data. Um, we'd provided them with the correct data, um, and they had actually voluntarily, um, due to their relationship with the district, they'd put in place additional safeguards to make sure that that wasn't going to happen on their end. Um, and then, uh, as, as a result of that as well, we've also put in place, um, some additional, some further safeguards on that. Um, specifically, um, additional verification, the data extracts are actually creating the data that they should be creating, um, and then also including, um, significant changes to any data extracts and new data extracts in our, um, IT change management process, which ordinarily wouldn't be the case, but we feel that puts an extra layer of visibility on that within IT. Um, so we feel we've done a number of things there to make sure that that, uh, is not going to happen again. Um, to, to clarify, um, you can see there on the screen the types of information that were, um, that were actually shared. And when I say shared, they were shared only with the vendor and not beyond the vendor. Um, so just to be really clear, that information was not ever exposed beyond just, just the vendor, um, that we have that contract with. So no information was available beyond that to parents, to anybody outside, um, and it wasn't exposed. So, um, moving on, um, the, um, as we mentioned, we immediately corrected that, and, and the data was never, um, in a position to be actually compromised. Okay. Um, so when we, when we talk about, uh, um, the use of digital learning tools in our district, um, and why we do, why we use these, um, you've seen this slide before, so I'll, I'll be very brief with this. But basically, our, our, um, our role as IT and as a district is to provide and support the technologies for learning that our schools need and our teachers need, um, while helping to keep kids, while making sure that we're keeping kids safe online. So, um, so the point really is to maximize the use of digital learning tools that we directly control, um, and, and minimize the use of third-party tools. That doesn't mean removing the use of third-party tools because there are so many that are valuable to our teaching and learning process. Um, but the idea is to minimize the use of those tools, maximizing the use of ones that we directly control. The tools that we directly control are up there in the top left-hand corner, which is our Microsoft Office 365 suite. Um, so we actually own the data that is in that, in, that is used in those tools. So we are moving, um, towards a model of identifying the, the, those third-party tools that are needed for particular purposes. So we're, we're really sort of pulling, controlling, um, you know, a, as we can to make sure that we're minimizing the, the use of those tools to the extent possible. So what that looks like, um, is this. Um, and I, I know, I believe, um, Trustee Cottle, you had asked at one point, you know, what are these tools actually used for? Um, so I'm, um, obviously not in the academic, uh, side of, of the House at the moment, but I have been a teacher, administrator, and, and, uh, use digital tools myself, and so I can speak a little bit to these. Um, and I will be very general about this because these are just some, some, just some examples. Um, these are not, this is not any kind of comprehensive list of the types of purposes that we would use these tools for. Um, but for computer science and robotics, um, a tool that's currently used in our district is code.org. That provides curriculum and resources to help students learn to code. Content area resources such as Newsella, or some people say Newsela, that actually provides, um, uh, content that's customizable, so like current events articles that are customizable by reading level, so students can actually have access to, um, similar content in different, um, at different reading levels. Um, a, another tool would be Socrative, um, which is formative assessment quizzes used, uh, used by teachers, uh, for, um, formative assessment purposes, for that immediate feedback to, to know, um, where students might be on a particular concept. Flipgrid's another that's used for collaboration and idea sharing, um, within a, a, a closed community of learners. And then finally, uh, ClassDojo, um, is, is a, a tool that's used for, um, classroom communication and classroom communities. Um, this is actually a very, very popular one nationally, um, as well as in our district. I believe 95% of school districts, um, actually use this tool. So it's very, very widespread out there. Um, and this actually connects teachers, parents, and students, um, through messaging and photographs, um, and, uh, allows teachers to provide feedback, um, to communicate with, uh, with parents. Um, so it really has, you know, when Dr. Lamarcus was talking about climate and engagement, this is really why teachers are selecting these kinds of tools, to be able to really engage with families in a, in a much better way, um, and ways that are actually meaningful to them and timely. Um, what's important is that, um, this, this particular tool, I know some questions have come up around ClassDojo, um, in reviewing the contract for this particular tool, um, they only using, uh, collect and use data that enables the tool to be used. They do not share data beyond that. Uh, they, um, they do not, um, uh, allow for any personal information to be displayed publicly. Um, and they do things like provide us notice in, you know, if there were a data breach, they provide us with notice, um, immediately. So there are very many safeguards in place around this, this particular tool. So that's just a few examples of tools that, that, that are used and why, um, those tools might be used in our, in our district and in, in other districts. So...
Excuse me?
Yes?
I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Taylor with the question.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. It's, it's easier for me if we, if I just kind of ask questions along the way.
Of course.
So gentlemen, I hope that's okay. Um, so really a couple of questions. Um, I've been asked quite often, um, from some of the teachers, when the district, you know, when we made that shift, and I know this is no news, to, to everyone going to Office 365 and, um, and, and really discouraging the usage, right, of Google and those Google products. And I know part of it had to do with, and maybe all of it. I'm wondering, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious if, if there's a connection between, you know, we don't have, we're fortunate enough to have the team that we have on the security side, and, and we don't have as, as much of a team that can be as diligent about micro, about my Office 365 as well as, as Google. So that's part of it, is not being able to, to support that? And is that, is there a, is there a security connection with that as well?
Every tool that we use, there's, there's, um, some kind of overhead for us in terms of making sure that's secure, uh, making sure that we're vetting that appropriately. And actually, I'm going to go into a little bit of how we vet those tools and to demonstrate to you how many eyes are on that and how much of an impact on the district there is. Yes, there's obviously a security component to that as well. Um, and actually, I don't know if you'd like to speak to that, Alan?
Yeah, for the record, Alan Cunningham, Information Security Officer. The, the main reason from a security perspective for being with Office 365 is, as a district, we own the data. Like, Microsoft and the contract do not own the data in any way, shape, or form. They can't sell it, they can't move it, they can't share it, none of that. With Google, we didn't have that same level of contract. And we couldn't get the same level of contract with Google. Uh, that was a, from a security perspective, a big contrib, big contributor to that. And, you know, recently, in the news, there have been issues with Google's data security. Uh, hindsight's always 2020, but we feel that overall for the district, and we know there's some growing pains and there's some friction, uh, but I've talked, I talked with the 21st Century learners today, and we're getting some of the same feedback. You know, and it's a hu, we're a huge super tanker. Trying to move it just a couple of degrees takes a little bit of time. And we're trying to ask for patience a little bit while we go through this change. Uh, I will say personally that maybe 18 months ago, two years ago, Microsoft's tools were not near the level where they needed to be. Microsoft, they put massive resources into it. They've worked with the 21st Century Learning Department really closely. We're one of their huge learning partners. We've had Microsoft staff here on site for weeks on end, helping us, uh, evaluate product and put in new product features and functions. There are features and functions in Microsoft Teams which are directly related to Washoe County School District staff input directly. So I wouldn't say we're on the bleeding edge of that, but we're on the forward edge of it where we really need to be. And from a security perspective, I am much happier with that. We have limited resources, so trying to direct those between two different products is not always good because there's always a crack that somebody wants to get into. With 365, we have some fantastic auditing tools, alerting tools, uh, that really let us, if, if any board members are traveling out of the country, uh, if you don't put in the other country exception form, we stop you from connecting. And, and that, that's a, that's a, that's a direct feature of Office 365. I apologize.
By the way, I'm going to need one of those forms in about two weeks.
And, and that has been, we, we, before we implemented that, we were seeing over 100 connections a day trying to come in from Iran, Iraq. I used to have a world map that I'd take to every Thursday meeting I have with, with Robert, with all the places. And there's one little island in the middle of the Pacific that's like thousands of miles away from anywhere. And for some reason, it was always on the map because people were using it as a virtual private network connection, a remote host, to try and connect into our system. And we've done away with that whole thing by just having Office 365, you know, put one rule in place that we can manage the exceptions for, for staff. We've had students who we blocked a couple of times and turned out they were on a six-month internship in Brazil. We didn't know. But now that message is starting to filter out to the schools, and it's making us more secure overall as a school district.
Now, this, this, that's very helpful because the, the part that I really wanted to hear about, and I, and I appreciate the, you know, just the, the, the rigorous, um, work that you're doing to make sure that, that our student data and staff data, right, is, is safe, um, is that that's, that can, that would now begin to be a part of my conversation as, as teachers bring up, you know, the frustrations and the challenges that they have because, you know, some people are using tools, they've been using them and they love them. Um, but that's, that's pretty compelling from that standpoint. It's, it's for me to, to hear and to learn about the security piece. Um, the other question I had is, and, and the, the, the list of vendors, and I know you gave us a, on the previous slide, you gave us a, an example of some of those, uh, some of those vendors and, and, um, um, that are being used. And then, and I know that there are more, and I know that there's a list. Superintendent just reminded me of that. Um, but I just want, just for my own expertise, eh, for my own knowledge, um, so for, with each of those third, third-party vendors that, that we use and that you vetted and so on, we have a contract with each of them? I'm just kind of checking some boxes as we go.
For the record, Robert Sidford, um, I'm actually going to explain that a little further in, in a little bit of detail around that because there, there are implications around all the different federal and state laws that, that, um, we need to make sure that we're, um, we're, we're looking at for, for this whole process. Basically, what we are doing is, um, we are...
I can wait for the slide.
Oh.
Let's wait for the slide.
I, I can give you it in real, real brief, um, just as a, as a preface, I guess. Basically, they have terms of service, privacy policies, they call them some, some different things sometimes. things sometimes. Those are actually, that's contractual language. So, we're vetting that language and, and in, in the process of vetting these tools. So, that's really what that is.
Okay. Great. Great. I look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
Sure. And the Google issue, just, just brief, really briefly, that's a management issue for us as well. There's obviously the contract pieces where Google owns the data that, that we would provide to Google. Yeah, and, and we own the, the data in Microsoft Office 365. All right, so moving on, and did I... Okay, moving on, this is our process and I think you can see, I took a screenshot of the current process. This is our digital workflow process for approving tools. And basically what you're seeing there is, and I would call this comprehensive and thorough. To be honest, this is, this is, I'm not aware of another district that is reviewing tools as comprehensively and thoroughly as this. I'm really not. We are absolutely on the leading edge of this, this kind of work to make sure that our kids are safe while they're using these tools. And by the way, we are constantly revising this process as laws evolve as well. So, we had a recent law passed in Nevada that comes into effect July 1st, 2020, that we're revising this process to make sure that's represented in here as well. So, really what this process looks like is to make sure that all of those federal laws are, are followed and the NRS guidance as well, or NRS legislation. So, basically, tools go through a requestor. If it comes from a school, they go to the principal for review, to the, the executive. So, in the school's case, an area superintendent, if it's coming from central office to, to the, the chief of that, of that office. It's reviewed by 21st Century Learning to make sure that there aren't other tools that could be used in its place. If there's repeated or, or functionality that's available in, say, Office 365, we'll take a really hard look at what is the functionality you really need as opposed to can you use Teams or Office 365 for this? It, it's reviewed by curriculum and instruction for alignment to our Nevada academic content standards to, and, and for good instructional practice. There are some tools that have been rejected because they're just sort of quote-unquote drill-and-kill applications that we don't really feel are good instructionally. There, it's reviewed by IT, so all the different departments within IT, basically to make sure it's gonna work, that it can be supported. It's reviewed by IT security to make sure that, you know, data protections are in place. It's reviewed by purchasing and legal to look at the contract issues, to look at any legal requirements there. And then it's reviewed finally by a final approval committee, which is a team of executives that actually takes a look and says, okay, we're, you know, if there are any questions about it that have been raised through that approval process, are we, is the educational need so great that we need to approve a tool? Or is it, you know, something that we, we're clear is safe for, for students? So, you can see that's a very, 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 very detailed process that is taking us substantial resources, obviously, to, to implement, but it's something that we feel is absolutely critical to make sure that we're selecting tools that are in addition to our core suite of tools that we actually need in our district and are safe for students. Some of the sort of mandates and, and other drivers of this process are represented here and I'll be brief about this. The, you know, some things have been mentioned in the past around things like the, you know, there was a public service announcement issued by the FBI last year, or was it last year or beginning of this year? I, I forget. But lots of, you know, it's an indication that lot, there's lots of attention on student data privacy. Basically, that announcement suggested that parents should be aware of the relevant laws and those are listed here. Parents should be aware of the technologies being used in their schools and that's why we publicize our list of approved tools. And so, you know, that, that's, you know, an indication of how important this is across the board and you see the media as well around this. Three US senators have actually just recently sent a letter to what they call ed tech providers, that could be called third-party providers, all of these different vendors that use, that provide these tools. And there, they are raising concerns over their data collection practices and that's why we feel our review process is so critical in what we do because we're already in front of that work, making sure that the vendors we use are as safe as possible. We, there's a report and I put a snapshot of the, or a screenshot of that on there. There's a, a group that puts out, it's the Parent Coalition for Student Privacy. They put out a report card each year. Their report card from this year, which was prior to our new legislation, new state legislation, ranked Nevada fifth in terms of laws around student data privacy. So, I would anticipate that, you know, with our new legislation, SB 403, that we may even rise in that ranking. So, that's a really good thing for us as a state, even though it puts a, a big burden on us as a district to make sure that students are safe. We've got the backing of our, of our legislature to, to, to do that same work. I've talked at length in the past about FERPA, SIPA, COPA, PPRA and the NRS in place around protecting student data, but these, those are the, the primary federal laws that, that guide our practice, regulate our practice. And, let me see. That is, oh, SB 403 is the new, this is a 2019 law that, I know there have been a number of misunderstandings around that. There are some complexities to that. Basically, where that falls is that we feel that's actually a really positive law that helps us to, to keep students safe as it's written currently. We were initially opposed to, to initial drafts of that, of that bill. And the reasons we were initially opposed were, one, that it required disclosure by the vendor of a security plan for the products that they use. No company, no vendor is going to disclose their actual security plan, so that would mean that we would not be able to use any of these tools, including Microsoft tools, including many core tools that we use. So, we were concerned that that was something that, you know, we need to verify they have a security plan and that they have security policies and that the contract language is in place to protect us, but they're not gonna share their actual security plan any more than we would share ours outside of our district. The other reason we were initially opposed is that it allowed opt-out of all technology use in the initial language for that law. So, what that would mean is that all students would, or all parents and guardians would be able to opt-out students of all technology use, the way that it was written. So, it wasn't just for specific technologies, they could actually opt-out of all technology use, which I can, I think you can imagine some of the implications that would have. So, once we were able to work to provide input on that bill, we were able to support that bill as finally written and as enrolled, and so we were happy to do that. All right, finally, just a brief discussion of, of one-to-one devices in our 21st Century Schools. And just for a little bit of context, here's how we have initiated some of this work in terms of funding sources for this. You can see the funding sources for, for our five current 21st Century Schools. At Trainer, that was our first school that began at the beginning of last year and that was funded through the state under the Nevada A21 grant. So, that funded a one-to-one program there and that was actually very successful. We've seen some really positive impacts of that and we can bring that back to you at some point. Vaughn Middle School has actually funded theirs through school purchases of equipment. And so, now this year, they've actually determined that they're ready to go to a take-home model with that technology. And I believe they're very, very pleased so far with the way that's been working. And then obviously, our three new schools, which we've, you've, you've heard at length about those schools and the, that was capital-funded devices for students at those schools. And in terms of sustaining those, sustaining these programs or, you know, decision-making around that, in terms of what, what 21st Century Schools look like in our district, that is represented really thoroughly in interim superintendent McNeil's Pathway to Positive Progress Plan. And that's something that will be considered very thoroughly in developing that plan. So, that's a really important step. There will be a huge amount of consultation with stakeholders around that, the development of that plan well into the fall with the idea that that would be actually finalized in the spring as a technology plan for our district. And then, in terms of, speaking of safety and security for these devices, which is really the core of this presentation, we have a number of things in place. We use a mobile device management software on those devices to basically, I don't wanna say lock them down, but make sure that they're used in the appropriate manner that they should be used so we can actually control those devices when they're at school and when they're at home. So, things like the district filtering continues to be applied to those devices. The district antivirus software continues to be applied and managed on those devices wherever they are. So, those are really positive things that, our ability to do that is another Microsoft tool that we use, which is another reason why, you know, standardizing on those kind of, you know, that same suite of tools is really helpful to us in terms of management of those, a large number of devices. We have a take-home agreement that is, we're standardizing by school and that includes a number of different sections. So, there's areas talking about student responsibilities with the devices, parents and parent and guardian responsibilities with the devices, rules around that, usage and care, routines and procedures at school, at home, charging, all of those kind of things. Account, security, filtering, you know, things around that. What to do with lost, stolen, damaged equipment, which actually does not happen nearly as much as one would think in, in these programs, which is really positive. And that's actually a national trend is that that's the case. Students who are issued devices for their own personal use look after them much better than they do, say, a laptop cart. And we definitely see that in our district as well. And then finally, we are looking at continuous improvement with this. So, what are the benefits? What are the, the issues that we might see with these kinds of programs? Primarily, of course, what are the benefits for students? What might not be benefits? So, we're studying that very thoroughly and, and will continue to report to you on, on progress regarding that. So, that is, that is where we're at with, with our 21st Century Schools. I do have, and I know that the hour is late, so we may not wanna actually play this at all, but just as an, an indication of some of the... I can't find the play button. I'm sorry, I can't.
It's like three minutes, right?
It's, it's, we can just play like 90 seconds of it if you'd like, but...
Hello, my name is Gina Leonard and I am principal at Sky Ranch Middle School. I want to thank you all for taking this journey with us as we start our brand-new school year. All of our Thunderbolts will have a brand-new opportunity with a one-to-one device, which means our students will be taking home a laptop to use both at school and at home to improve and create...
Can I ask why this is planned? Was this directed to parents?
Innovative new ways for their education.
This was directed to the school community. Yes, largely to parents and guardians, yes.
And one of those new things that we will be working through together with our families.
And each, each new school created their own.
The next steps here will be to watch this video and get information on the one-to-one devices and we will be here to answer all of your questions.
I think we can probably cut that. Yeah. Yeah. So, it, it goes into a lot of the issues that are, that we address in the, in the take-home agreement and those kind of things and specifically device security, password security, those kind of things. So, with that, I will open, open this to any questions you have.
Great. Trustee Cottle?
Thank you. So, the district officials, they all have contracts with the district, I'm assuming? And then the payment, we're paying them with district funds for their services, right?
For the record, Robert Sidford, it depends on the actual service on the tool. Some of these we actually contract with as, you know, for, for large-scale contracts. I mean, Infinite Campus would be a good example of that.
Yeah.
So, we contract with them directly. That's obviously a large, a big process where there's a substantial review of that and, and yes, there, obviously there's payment involved there. Some of these other tools, well, you know, when we talk about digital learning tools or third-party apps or whatever you, you know, whatever terminology you use, we consider their terms of service, privacy policies to be the contracts. Some of those have a fee associated with those, with them and some of them don't.
So, those would be the, considered, if we're not paying them, free, the free ed tech vendors?
Free ed tech vendors isn't a term I've, I've used. I think, you know, I think we need to look at them all as the same, you know, on the same level. I think there's, there are reasons why, you know, we, we need to make sure that our students are safe while using whatever tool it is. And so, we need to have that same lens, whatever the tool is. So, when we talk about whether they're free or whether they're paid, I don't necessarily see a, a big distinction there. We're really reviewing the terms that we're, that, and the protections they have in place in the same kind of, in the same kind of light.
But we have contracts with all of them and so we, there's terms and so...
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
So, the digital learning tools that you also listed, the few examples, those would also be considered digital learning tools? So, we have essentially contracts with them as well?
So, the technical term used by like the...
Or terms of service.
Department of Education's like Privacy Technical Assistance Center is, it's really catchy. It's online educational services. And that's, we, we don't use that term. We use digital learning tools because it's much more of a realistic term for, for what they're actually doing. So, but yes, we, we consider their, we consider the, the terms of service that we've reviewed and the privacy policies to be our controlling interest in that, yes.
And then Polakitis, the one-to-one, Polakitis is a pilot, so at some point, district will come back to us either halfway through or all the way through the school year and determine from those if this is something district wants to continue with other elementary schools in the future. Is that right?
Yes, exactly. So, Polakitis is definitely a, a pilot school for, for a, to be a, a one-to-one school where every student has a device. And we are going to be studying, well, we are already studying that very carefully to see what the impact is. So, we're working with our Office of Accountability to make sure that we're talking with, you know, we'll be talking with students, with parents, with teachers, with staff about what's, what's happening. We also are using a, a survey tool that will help us to determine and benchmark that against other schools for things like engagement, for use of technology, use of, you know, 21st century skills, all of those kind of things as well. So, there's, there's a number of different data sources we're gonna be using, obviously including observations. But yes, we will be doing a very thorough, especially with Polakitis because it's our only elementary school in this situation, a very thorough review of what, what's going on there.
Mr. Noble?
So, thank you for your presentation. I did have a couple of questions about how the web filtering itself works and how exactly it's determined what should be blocked and what should not be blocked. Is that determined by you guys? Is there a third party involved? What's the deal with it?
So, we do use, as, as all school districts do, we use a, we use a vendor for, to provide the filtering service and we don't like to reveal which one. I mean, it's not hard to find out, but it's not something we choose to, to say, hey, it's this one because it's the sort of an avenue of attack potentially. But, but basically, in a nutshell, they, they are very good at categorizing websites. We don't go around saying, we don't like that one, we don't like that one, or we, we like that one, we'll unblock that. Unless there are some very specific reasons or requests for that purpose, basically what we do is we use the categorization of those, of those sites done by companies who are professionals in doing this and have feedback loops with all sorts of districts and users to identify those categories. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Any others? Trustee Manetto?
I want to thank you for your presentation. I want to thank you for your concern for our kids. Now, I'm gonna drop the other shoe. I really struggle with all this stuff. I do. I know, I, one of my previous students comes home from desert skies every day, loves his new school. He has a terrible headache all day, all night. I, I just don't think there's enough research that's been done for us to be implementing all this. My very own son and grandson, both of their, their, some of their information was leaked and as a result, my son, my grandson does not go to Washoe County School District anymore. I feel like we are putting the children very possibly in a lot of jeopardy and without their parents' consent, we just do it. And I think parents should get to say what happens with their children. And even though it can cause a lot more work for a lot of teachers... even though it can cause a lot more work for a lot of teachers, if parents don't want their kids involved in this, then they shouldn't be involved. And that's just me.
I appreciate your concerns. It's something, obviously, we are looking at in terms of, you know, what is the appropriate amount of technology to be used in schools? What I will say is that technology use is very, very carefully embedded in the Nevada Academic Content Standards, in the ELA standards, in the math standards, in the science standards. We also have state standards on computer science. We also have state standards on integrated technology, so the use of, you know, learning technology skills. And we do believe that those skills cannot be learned other than by actually using computers. Now, whether that's a one-to-one environment, whether that's lab environments, card environments, that's a discussion I think that as a district we need to have, continue to have. And so, you know, I appreciate, appreciate your concerns. I think that, you know, when we're talking about what our employers are wanting from us in terms of students coming out of our school district to take advantage of the opportunities on offer for them, one of the things that's been very clearly expressed through offices like Owen with the Governor's Office is employers want students with 21st century skills. They want technology skills. And so, you know, we've got to balance very carefully, you know, making sure that we provide an equitable opportunity for kids to develop those skills while also making sure they're as safe as possible and, you know, making sure that we're doing the right thing all the way around, balancing that.
Dr. McNeil.
I'll just add very quickly. I think, you know, there's always a fine balance. And I think, you know, everybody understands what the concerns are. And there's a balance between screen time. There's a balance between what it looks like in the classroom for a teacher with 35 kids and whether you move to an opt-in or an opt-out, what that looks like on a management scale. So five of us could be allowed to opt-out. Four of us are going to say, well, no, I'm going to be doing this particular type of curriculum. And I think this is one of the areas, you know, as trustee Cottle had stated earlier, as far as Nick Polakitis, being a pilot school, we're not quite sure where we're going to be going for our elementary schools at this point in time. And so we want to take an appropriate step and to take a look at what this looks like at a school-wide level. But we do know, to reiterate what Mr. Sidford was stating, you know, we don't even want to refer to anymore as 21st century. We're kind of past that point when we're talking about employers and what employers are looking for. And not only for the hard skills, but the soft skills as well. And so that goes into the technology, it goes into collaboration, it goes into making sure that I can work in a team environment. And I would say upwards of 80% of our employers that we talk with, that's what they want. They want a student, first of all, that's going to show up on time, but also has the technology background in order to be able to go right into, you know, a career, if that's what they decide to do, and into post-secondary education.
All right. Are there any other questions on the board? I would like to thank you as well. And, you know, I do recognize that it is a challenging conversation. I think we're all learning kind of how to manage this together. And, but I have a lot of faith and trust in the work that you all are doing and keeping the information secure and to the best of your abilities. And I've seen, as a parent, the opportunities it's brought my own daughter, who has a, you know, I think, an added level of love and interest for math because of things like DreamBox and Prodigy and, you know, just even the curriculum in the classroom that has online components that go along with it. So I see both, you know, hand in hand. How do we manage it? So...
Thank you. And we appreciate the conversation, the ongoing conversation about all this because it is an evolving world. It's something where we've got to make those balances, you know, in the right ways for our kids. I appreciate it.
Great. And we do have some public comment on this item.
Todd Bailey.
After five years of myself and Mr. Eppolito coming to these meetings and talking about computer adaptive testing and student data privacy, we have one trustee, one trustee who is finally bringing it up in a meaningful way that matters to stakeholders in this community. So Ms. Manetto, you come find me after this meeting. I got a hug for you because you're absolutely right. Every point you made is on point. And we've been coming here for five years talking about this, haven't got a lot of attention. Well, let's deal with some questions. First thing, in this district, are there any Huawei, and I hope I'm pronouncing that, Huawei switches? Huawei is a switch company that's owned by the Communist Chinese. Their executive is currently under arrest in Canada right now. So do we have any of those switches here in Washoe County? Second question is, the digital learning devices that are going to be going home, can a district employee remotely turn on the microphone when the device is at home? Can a district employee remotely turn on a camera from the device when the device is at home? Everything we talked about here is great, great presentation, except it's not dealing with the issue that Mr. Eppolito and myself and others are bringing up for five years now. The problem is not the security implementations that the staff is doing. That's all great. Okay? The problem is the district extracts information from computer adaptive testing and sends it out of the district. That's the security problem we've been talking about that you guys did not address at all. Here's how you can separate this in a way that's meaningful. Let me give you one little thing that'll help you understand technology. Technology is complicated. I used to own an internet company. I know. You separate this by software and companies that you have contracts with versus software and companies you only have licensing agreements with. That's what Class Dojo is and other software that it uses. You don't have a contract with those people. You've simply clicked yes, like on my iPhone here. Let me show you how this works. Here's the licensing agreement. You read this whole thing, and at the end you click yes. That's not a contract, ladies and gentlemen. My last comment here is, when it comes to the Microsoft 360 software that you're using now, does that information that we supposedly own, that the district owns, does that reside on district servers? Or does that reside on servers outside the district? Thank you.
I think before we move to the next public comment, I'll give the opportunity to our speakers to address any of that that they may want to.
Thank you. For the record, Robert Sidford, I think we'll probably split the load on this. We do not contract with Huawei for switches or any other equipment. Let me see. Regarding devices and remoting into those, that's what our mobile device management software takes care of. We have the ability to restrict settings on those devices so that those kinds of things cannot happen. So no, we do not, staff do not have the ability to remote into student devices at home and turn on things like the microphone or camera. I believe Alan was wanting to answer some...
Technically, it would be very, very difficult for anybody within the district to know what the IP address of that student machine was to actually go to it. We do not have any software on that machine that anybody in the district can remotely control that machine while that machine is at home. It's just not there. Huawei, the Chinese company, are a chip manufacturer. None of the devices that we have currently in the district have any of those chips inside them. They don't just make switches. They make chips that go inside other products, mainly IoT products like cameras and those types of things. At the moment, there are none of those in the district. And the data for Microsoft, for the outside servers, our servers do live in a data farm that Microsoft manage, similar to Amazon Web Services would have it, that Google Web Services have it. But we have a private VPN tunnel, which is fully encrypted between the district to Microsoft. So none of that data is exposed when it travels. And then you have data centers, if anybody's been out to the switch center, which is one of the most secure places you can ever try and get into, that the data is in. And that data is replicated in different data centers within the US. It does not travel outside the US borders for security purposes.
To add to that, I think it's generally accepted in the industry that the Microsoft servers and the Microsoft services are the industry standard for storage of data.
Next public comment?
John Eppolito.
I hope this one works. It might not work. My name is John Eppolito. I'm with, do you guys want me to move over to there? What do you want me to do?
Yeah, I think we need you a mic, so...
Why doesn't this work? You guys...
It's turned on.
There it is. There it is. You just have to push the right button. My name is John Eppolito. I'm with Protective Additive Children. I would like to thank you for this agenda item. And I would also like to give a big thank you to trustee Manetto. It's exactly what we've been saying for at least four years. Most of the research shows, to answer Ms. Manetto's questions, which these gentlemen didn't, most of the research shows, when it comes to one-to-one devices and screen time before high school, less is more. And this is exactly why Bill Jobs and Steve Gates kept their kids away from screens and devices before high school. And numerous dot-com individuals do that right now. A lot of the Google executives that own $8 million houses up at Martis Camp, their kids aren't on this stuff in school. It's for our kids. It's not for their kids. The 21st century skills, that's not the same as logging in and sharing student data. Teach the kids how to code. Teach the kids how to do what the backend of the computer, not log in and share their data with vendors. That's what's happening. The district has already proven three times they cannot keep our children's data safe. They talked about two of them just now. And no matter what type of data breach happens, your IT department is going to come in here and explain it away, just like they did tonight, unless they absolutely have to say we screwed up and the kid's, his future is in jeopardy. They're not going to say that unless they absolutely have to. The third data breach that they didn't talk about was the Edmodo data breach. And that data breach happened almost three years ago. And that is a third-party ed tech vendor, a free vendor, that's paid with student data, just like all the free vendors are paid. That data had student IDs for sale on the dark web. We begged the district to tell parents about that data breach. And I know most of you weren't here. Angie, you were. And you chose not to tell the parents about the data breach. Two years ago, Edmodo, the entire company was sold to the Chinese. And we came in here again, and we begged you guys to tell the parents about that, and you kept it from the parents. That's wrong. Pearson, I'm going to have to go into the end of the comments at the end of the meeting because I don't have enough time. Pearson told the FBI about the, or Pearson was told about the data breach in March by the FBI. Clark County abruptly quit using Pearson AmesWeb in April. In July, Pearson decided to tell the rest of us that there was a data breach. The lawsuit claims that the student IDs were breached. I just asked the Pearson guy. He wouldn't give me a direct answer. They want to keep their contract with you. Pearson should be kicked out. What does a vendor have to do before you guys will sever your contract with them? Most of the vendors on your list, Todd's right, you don't have a contract with them. He couldn't get it spit it out, but that's what he meant. School Messenger, also student data, student IDs were breached. There...
That's the end of your time.
I understand that. And there's, I could speak for an hour on this. And these guys speak and blah, blah, blah. And I'll be back.
For the record, Robert Sidford, I believe that the research on one-to-one and screen time is actually more in favor of one-to-one programs, in my expert opinion, being beneficial for students. And I've seen plenty of research where schools are very happy with the results of one-to-one programs. Regarding screen time, we have, we actually have a statement on our website regarding our policy on screen time or our approach to screen time. And that is that there are two different types of screen time. There's screen time that is sort of passive screen time, where students are just, you know, looking things up or playing games or those kind of things, which are not of any educational benefit specifically. And then there's active screen time, where they're doing things that might be collaborating with other students, that might be learning to code, learning other 21st century skills, doing these other things, some of which I presented earlier. So I think it's really important that we make that distinction there. Regarding Edmodo, we do not use Edmodo. It is not an approved tool in our school district and has not been for some time. I apologize. I don't remember exactly. But we do not use that tool in our district. Regarding the Pearson, the Pearson incident, I apologize. I forget the, oh, the AmesWeb incident. Yeah, please. I'm sorry. I forgot the...
Alan Cunningham for the record. With the AmesWeb data incident, and we did have a personal conversation around this particular incident with the member of the public who expressed issues with that. There were no student IDs involved. There was no proof of that whatsoever. We actually went back to AmesWeb slash Pearson, asked them for more data, in particular for that member of the public's children. And no assessments were ever done on any of those four children. The only information was date of birth, first name, last name, no personal ID. The AmesWeb contract, I want to talk a little bit about the contract process. There's a massive difference between the school district signing a contract with a vendor than somebody going on their iPhone and clicking okay. Right? When you click okay, you agree to terms of service, which legally is a contract. Right? With the district, we vet those contracts. We vet the terms of service, the privacy agreements rigorously. In fact, I read those multiple times. We really look for where is data stored? If it's outside the US, generally, we don't look at that vendor anymore. We won't sign a contract with that. We have multiple standards that we've worked with with legal counsel. And 21st Century, to come to as secure as we can possibly make it, but still give our teachers the functionality and our students the functionality they need. And for that member of the public, if you want to code online, you've got to log in first. 99 out of 100 sites will make you create an account before they'll let you go in and learn. Right? So logins are necessary. Thank you.
And thank you for triggering my memory around the AmesWeb contract because basically what we, what we immediately did with AmesWeb was we immediately stopped sending them data to enable their services. And we initiated a very intense process of renegotiating that contract. We determined exactly what we wanted in there as a district in terms of data protections. And that was, I can tell you, a multiple-week process involving all of those stakeholders within the district that we, that I mentioned before. And we initiated that. And they were quite amenable to those terms. And so that was a very, very thorough process that actually, you know, has helped inform our practice moving forward as well. And then finally, School Messenger. School Messenger, we do not consider that to be a breach. Now, it might be semantics, but we consider a breach to be, the definition of a breach, to be the release of information, whether intentional or unintentional, into an untrusted environment. And I want to be clear that that was not an untrusted environment. That vendor was under contract with a district entity. And so that data was never in danger of being exposed beyond that vendor. So that was a trusted environment. But because we were under contract with that vendor, we were able to immediately address that for the benefit of student data.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? This was just information and discussion again. And I really appreciate all of the time and work you put into it and your visual aids that you added to the story. And I think it was an important conversation for us to have. And I know we've had to put off a couple agendas, but we're glad we were able to get to it this evening. So thank you. All right. I am now going to actually open agenda items 5.01 all the way through 5.1...
5.7.
I'm sorry, 5.07. That's how tired I am, through 5.15. For conversation, we do have public comment. We'll get to that. But... For conversation, we do have public comment, we'll get to that, but we looked at all these policies a week ago in our policy committee meeting. This is step two of that process, where we look for preliminary approval for a 13-day review process, and, excuse me, and then they do come back to us for final approval. I'll just take a moment right now, though, to thank you all from the staff for being so patient and hanging in there with us this evening, and I apologize that it has put you in a situation of having to be here till 8:30 for something that will now hopefully go by pretty quickly, but I appreciate all of your patience with us. So we do have some public comment on these consent agenda items. We may call on you to answer any questions, but I'll first ask, I'm not consent agenda items, our policies, sorry. I'll first ask, though, if the Board of Trustees have any questions on a specific policy that they would like to discuss before hearing public comment.
Are they all open?
They are all open at this time. Again, we just discussed them last week, and we'll be opening them up for that 13-day review, where we might get some more information in between now and the next time, so. All right, we'll start with our public comment.
Natha Anderson.
Can I do both of them at the same time? Good evening, Natha Anderson, on behalf of the Washoe Education Association, thank you for the late night. I will try to make this as quick as possible. First of all, I want to thank JJ, as well as Lisa Skoury, as well as the legal department for all the work that they did on these policies, I'm sorry, yes, on these possible policies. Although there are many that we were very active in when it came to the legislature, there are two that I just wanted to point out very quickly, if I may. The first is proposed board policy 4510, that it has to do with the volunteers. For us, that is a huge issue. For our educators, we have many of our elementary school teachers in particular who have volunteers that come in, and so this was something when it was changed before that caused some problems in some of our lower grades. And so with the change that the legislature had last year, we were very excited about those changes and are happy to see that in the proposals for the policy, so ask for your support. The second one, the student suicide also is a big issue for us, obviously, because just as educator safety is important to us, our students' safety is the most important thing. So again, the changes that are being proposed, we believe are very strong and are smart to do. And then finally, we ask for your support of board policy 3360. This has to do with the reimbursement funds. I heard earlier today that they were, it was much higher than I anticipated, but still I think it's only like 180 is what will be possible. We believe that this policy, however, if adopted, would be a much more efficient fashion and a much quicker way to get the help for our educators. Before, the past fashion that it was done, it would, we would need to turn in our receipts by January, we would not actually receive the money until May. And so this, especially, I think it's number four in the proposed policy, having that turnaround be a much quicker element would be very helpful for many of our educators. So again, ask for your support of those three items. Thank you.
Todd Bailey.
Madam Vice Chair, we respectfully request that Policy 1500 be returned to the policy committee and direct staff to restore the constitutional rights of students. These here are the faces of students who were put into a scream room in the past here in Washoe County School District, whose constitutional rights were violated and whose parents were never called. We are now submitting Public Information Request 008 for the District Report Intervention Practices for Special Education Students that was submitted to the Board on August 13th, 2013 by Frank Salvaggio. Trustee Kelly, I believe you were at both the meeting on July 23rd of that year and August 13th, where we did hear those students talk. There was not a dry eye in this room when those students were testifying, and I would suggest that every trustee go watch the video of that meeting to understand what I'm talking about. The revision of Policy 1500 must include Section 2 Subsection H, that allows school police or administrators to hold a student indefinitely for questioning without informing them of their constitutional right to remain silent, no Miranda warnings, and no parents allowed. Section 3 Subsection E9 also allows any district employee to confiscate a student's electronic device and search it without a warrant and even keep it. There is no language regarding the return of the student property. We were told the student can leave the questioning at any time, however, that's false. Courts and even people here today reaffirm the idea that students are essentially in custody the minute they walk on school grounds and beyond. Leaving the police or administrator during questioning would be truancy, so that's not going to happen. The entire debate about constitutionality the district is putting forward is false. It is unconstitutional. I am begging this board, don't do this. You swore an oath to protect the Constitution, this is your moment to do that. If the citizens of Washoe County cannot depend on elected representatives to protect and defend the Constitution, including for students, that eventually leads to NRS 306. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Do we have any further public comment on the Agenda Items 5.07 through 5.15? All right, and if the Board doesn't have any other questions on any of these policies, then I'd be looking for a motion to approve preliminary approval and initiate the 13-day public review and comment period for Items 5.07 through 5.15.
Madam Vice President, I make, I, did I jump on someone? Okay, I move that we approve, we give preliminary approval, I should say, to the board policies as spread out, as spelled out in the agenda, and make a special note that these policies is to put us in compliance with state law.
And to initiate the 13-day...
And to addition to 13-day review period, and look forward to whatever comments we get from the public.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Calvert. All in favor? All in favor?
Oh.
Opposed. All right, no opposed, it passes?
Just really quickly, I want to thank all of our staff for staying very, very late. I know this has been a long day for all of you, so thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. So we're on to Agenda Item 6.01, Board Reports. Anyone like to make a board report this evening? All right, 6.02, Interim Superintendent Report.
I'm good.
All right. 7.01, Future Agenda Item Requests from Anyone?
I would just the one I mentioned earlier, when we were talking, we were talking about discipline and making it equitable, and what some of the research says on that. When Dr. Lamarcas was making the report and we talked about that.
Great. And...
No discussion on that, please.
Any other Agenda Item requests?
Yeah.
All right, then we are now moving on to 7.02, our final public comment for the evening.
John Eppolito.
My name is John Eppolito, I'm president of Protect Nevada Children. On that data breach, according to the lawsuit, the student IDs were breached from Pearson. The attorney has called me twice, he wants me to be part of that, but I don't know if I'm going to. But I don't know who to believe. Also, on the...
The reason these student IDs are...
The reason these student IDs are such a big deal is because that's the number that you use to track these kids from kindergarten through the workforce. In our state, it's actually through death because the databases are never deleted. That's the number Infinite Campus uses, that's the number Sane uses. That's why these student IDs are such a big deal. Even if there's never another data breach, these free ed tech vendors, they're paid with student data. For about five years, experts on the left and right have written about how these profiles the free vendors are creating on our kids will affect their future, and you guys have had all the information. SB 403, the gentleman here, what he said, I don't believe that's true. I wrote that part of the bill, and I don't believe that I said that people could opt out of everything. It was an individual thing. We have parents that don't want to use certain things. ClassDojo is a terrible example. In fact, ClassDojo also, they left out that that's a behavior modification program. The New York Times have written about the problems with ClassDojo, and the Reno Gazette Journal have written about the psychological profiles ClassDojo creates on kids. These guys only give you part of the story. Also, on the Microsoft 365, German schools banned Microsoft 365 over privacy concerns. The fact that the district owns the data on the children, that doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy at all. The district now is saying parents cannot opt the children out. Oh, and by the way, COPA, they talked about COPA. Many of the vendors used in the districts are not in compliance with COPA. ClassDojo is just one of them, but there's numerous vendors that you guys are using that are not in compliance, according to Cal Berkeley. And again, I give you guys all this stuff and nothing seems to matter. These, let's see, ed tech vendors. You can find us on Protect Nevada Children, and I'm going to read you a little bit of an email I got from a Nick Polakita's mom yesterday. Yes, the school created an email account for my child. Yes, we are continually told we cannot opt out. Nick Polakita set up, she put G Suite account, but I don't think that's what she means, an account for our daughter on the first day of school without our knowledge or consent. She was also given a computer, again, without our knowledge or consent. This child has learning disabilities. When you force a kid on a screen that has learning problems, it's much worse for that kid. And you guys are doing that at these schools, and it's wrong, and I don't think you understand, and I don't think you're owning up to it.
Your time is up.
Except one trustee. Thank you very much, trustee.
Your time is up.
I understand that.
We waited for four years to this, and now we go three minutes to speak. Excuse me for...
Todd Bailey.
Quick correction, the policy is 5100, not 1500, but you all knew that. Well, finally tonight, we believe the facts are going to show that trustee Angela Taylor may have violated NRS 281 when she took a campaign contribution from Superintendent Tracy Davis and then did not recuse herself from the termination proceedings on Day Zero, July 1st, 2019. Interestingly, we reviewed Policy 9000 of Washoe County School District on trustee ethics and can find no policy that regulates campaign contributions from trustees by the superintendent. We asked the district to develop a policy on recusal. I wrote the language, and everyone sat silently and refused. I couldn't get one trustee to support me on that. There actually was a decision that would have made everyone happy on July 1st, and that is recusing yourself from the process. It is alarming and troubling to discover that you accepted contributions from a superintendent while voting on her employment, her bonuses, and her termination. We are about to select another superintendent, and we need every candidate for that position to know not to make political contributions to trustees. We simply cannot have superintendents making up to $10,000 in political contributions to trustees, and then those trustees voting on their bonuses and employment status. We are not the controlling legal authority here. We are not lawyers, and we do not know yet if it is a violation of NRS 281. We want to find out, we just don't know where to send it. Is it the Ethics Committee or is it the AG? I don't know. We'll figure that out. We have tried to bring these matters to your attention and how seriously they truly are. I have failed to communicate in a meaningful way, to change your hearts and minds, and I will accept responsibility for that when I write my report. I wrote the language for a new policy and could not get one vote. That's terrible. Now, look, I realize my comments today may have made some of you uncomfortable. And you're probably going to chase me out of the room, I'm going to need a head start. Ready, set, and go.
What's I put away, what I shouldn't do? What's next? Did I just adjourn? Okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, October 15th, in this building, in this room, and I will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.